And we are ready to convene the August 7th Board of the Concord Select Board. Mary, would you please call the roll?
I will call the roll. Ms. Escobedo?
Present.
Mr. Howell?
Here.
Ms. Ackerman?
Here.
Mr. Dane?
Present.
And myself, Mary Hart.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, we're, everybody's here. We have a quorum. We have, we start off with our period of public comment, in which we ask people to make comments on matters that are not before the board this evening. So it's a, could be a free for all. We never know what's coming, right? So, Carlin, please identify yourself and...
Is this turned on for the folks at home?
Should I?
Okay. Can the people on Zoom hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay, great. Hi, Carlin Reed, 83, with send. This is a public comment regarding a tenant rental assistance program. I ask the Select Board and the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust for the support of a $50,000 allocation from the trust's $3 million balance to the Hugh Cargill Trust to support its informal tenant rental assistance program. I will be making the same request to the Housing Trust at the August 16 Housing Roundtable. With me also on the line, I wanted to note that Lucy Rossborough from the Hugh Cargill Trust is also watching today. The Hugh Cargill Trust Committee is frequently asked to help Concord renters with their bills, and they do confidentially and always after considering many factors in their current situation, such as financial challenges and personal needs. Applicants are referred to Hugh Cargill through the Council on Aging, Community Services, Community Chest, Minuteman Arc, Gaining Ground, Nathan Pratt Section 8 Housing, and Concord Housing Authority, and people find them on their own. Here's some data that I got from Lucy. In the last 15 months, 10 households have been helped by the Hugh Cargill with rent assistance payments for a total of $6,152. Now, I'm estimating that there are at least 170 low-income households that are potentially eligible for assistance. That's roughly how many households have signed up with the Light Plant's Residential Rate Assistance Program. The current tax relief programs help property owners but not renters. They're being left out. According to the town's 2022 Housing Production Plan, 26% of our housing units are rentals. Please support this $50,000 allocation request. Thank you.
Could you just, what is, what is the source of that money that you're asking for?
It's the pot of money currently held by the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, which is roughly $3 million. And at the August 16 Housing Roundtable, they'll be talking about how to spend it. This is one of the line items that is listed, that was listed on a chart and discussed at the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust's meeting of August 1st.
So, and is the trust in favor of this?
I'll find out August 16.
So anyway, you're talking about housing money, and your idea is that helping people who live in housing is equally important as providing the housing?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Right. Anybody else? All right, we will not go out of our way to stimulate public comment. So then we will move on to our consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, Ms. Escobedo?
I'd like to pull, I don't, the minutes for July 24th, please.
I'm sorry, did you say you have a comment on the minutes?
Yes, on July 24th.
Okay. What would you like to have the minutes do?
Okay, thank you. On page five of the July 24 minutes, sorry, page eight, the fifth paragraph, where we were giving the liaison reports, it referenced a comment regarding, we were collecting comments regarding the Novo Riverside Commons project. I was quoted as indicating I would like to see more passive area on the, on the property, which is true. But I think in addition, more importantly, I also said that I thought it was important for there to be onsite space for seniors and families, children, who are not necessarily going to want to go all the way to ride out or somewhere else in order to be outdoors on their property, on their, adjacent to their apartment living. And so I, you know, such things as benches, benches and other amenities would be helpful. So I would just like to have a little bit of an expansive definition in my comments.
Well, this is one of the reasons we try to get the, the package out well in advance of the meeting so that these corrections can be made prior to our distributing the, the meeting package or before we come here. Why don't we deal with that by having the minutes of tonight's meeting show that you made this comment? And then we can go ahead and approve these minutes as part of the consent agenda? Would that, would that work?
That's fine.
Okay, good. So let's do that. And then have we voted, we, you did already vote, didn't we?
No, we have a second. We're gonna vote now. Ms. Escobedo?
With the amendment, aye.
We're, we're not, well, we're not going to amend those minutes. We're going to include them in tonight's minutes. Is that okay with you?
Oh, I misunderstood. Um, no. I think it's important it's included in those actual minutes.
Okay.
All right. So why don't we then pull out, we, we have a different motion for the, for the consent agenda, which would just be a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding the minutes.
Just as amended. We can, right, we can simply amend the minutes and then...
You can do that.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. So let's just go on with it.
So, move to approve the consent agenda with the July 24 minutes amended per Ms. Escobedo's comment.
Second.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you. Okay, so that is the consent agenda. And then we move on to the, we move on to the disclosure issues, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have before us three requests for acknowledgement or waiver of conflict of interest, conflict of interest situations involving three different people. I think two members of the Planning Board and the proprietor of the, what is it, Concord?
Discover Concord. Discover Concord.
And so we have, in the package, we have the requests, and we have opinion of council on each one of those, a memo from Town Council on each one of those. And so how do we want to deal with that? Do we want to take them one by one?
Yeah.
Okay. So with regard to the first, all right, so the first one is,
Abigail Flanagan?
So, oh, no, no, no.
So the, the first one on the agenda is Abigail Flannigan from the Planning Board.
Okay. So, all right, so let me find, let me find that. Oh, here, sharing remarks, where, what do we have this?
You want?
Um, oh, okay, I've stuck something else on it. So the first one is, these are the licenses?
Copy if you want.
Oh, here we go. Okay, so, the first one, the first one is, um,
Abigail.
Abigail Flanagan.
And this one is present.
And she is present. And so would you like to be heard on that?
Sure, I'm here. I'm happy to answer questions. Abigail Flannigan, 398 Main Street. Member of the Planning Board filed a 19A disclosure related to the MBTA Communities Act. I can give you a brief synopsis, or I'm happy to answer specific questions if the Select Board has.
Well, I think on that one, the Town Council has calmed down pretty clearly on the fact that that falls under the third exception to the statute, which says that if it's a matter which affects a large number of people in town, it is not a conflict of interest for somebody to participate in that decision.
And the State Ethics Commission disagrees.
Hmm?
And the State Ethics Commission disagrees.
It disagrees?
Yes, which is why I filed the disclosure. I was instructed to seek out the opinion of the State Ethics Commission related to this matter. The State Ethics Commission instructed me to file a 19A disclosure. After that fact, Town Council was consulted. Town Council gave a differing opinion. I'm not in the business of ignoring the State Ethics Commission when instructed, since I'm the one who would be subject to a civil penalty. Hence, I filed the disclosure.
Okay, but, but you did file the application and the, and the, and the opinion of council is that you qualify for that exemption, and if we give you that exemption, you're in a clear.
You granted me the 19A disclosure exemption.
Okay. Is there any discussion necessary on that? It seems pretty clear that it's similar to what all of us do as we vote on tax rates and all kinds of things like that that affect a majority of people in town, just as this zoning would, so.
But, but just to be clear, I have not requested an exemption under 19C. I've requested an exemption under 19A, so you have to consider it under the section in which I requested the exemption. So, so 19A is the broad financial disclosure exemption request. And so it simply says, I have a financial interest or a potential financial interest in a matter before the board in which I sit. The matter is, you know, it's one that's generally applicable, but I'm applying under the 19A exemption. And what I'm asking for is that this, the financial interest is so kind of, it may increase my property value, it may decrease my property value, it may not affect my property value at all. My property may be included, it may not be included. It's so amorphous that it's not possible for it to truly impact my ability to be fair and impartial. Now, it may be true that I could also seek an exemption under 19C, which is the general applicability rule. The issue with that is that I bear the affirmative burden of proving that it's generally applicable. Because we haven't designated where these zones exist, it's impossible for us right now to, to demonstrate what the population is, does it meet the 10% minimum to be generally applicable? So it's a more efficient and clean way to do it under 19A as opposed to 19C, which would take more time and might be a little bit more difficult for us to establish at this point in the process. That's why I requested it under 19A, and that's what I was specifically instructed to do by the State Ethics Commission.
Do we have, anybody have a problem with that?
With what?
With her seeking the exemption under subsection A rather than subsection C.
So we send it back? We're sending it back?
No.
No.
We're agreeing that we, that we agree with her logic and that it's okay to proceed with deliberations and participation in the discussions.
Right.
What did the State Ethics rule on 19A?
So the State Ethics Commission recommended 19A because 19C is just a different process. I bear the affirmative burden, and because we haven't, the way this came about is that Town Planner has been so helpful and Town Staff. When we first approached with the MBTA Community Act, they dropped a pin where the Concord MBTA station is in West Concord and drew a half-mile radius. My property happens to be within that half-mile.
Mm-hmm.
That's a starting point. That's a jumping off point for discussions about where these zoning overlay districts are going to be. So because of that, my property may be included, it may not be included, you know, there's no real, no. So 19A is the general exemption, the general exception. That's what we filed under. Because to do it under 19C, I bear the burden of showing it's 10% of the population, all of these other things.
Okay.
At this point, that's too difficult for us to do because we don't know where these districts are going to be. So out of an abundance of caution, the State Ethics Commission said, file it under 19A.
We're gonna have a lot of people in this situation, aren't we?
Well, sitting on the Planning Board, there's, there's a few. But this is, you know, when you receive an opinion from the State Ethics Commission, and it's a simple disclosure form, and I'm of the mind that we're better off disclosing than not disclosing.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Oh, no.
No.
I support it. I think it's totally reasonable.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we need to grant the exemption.
The exemption.
Under 19A.
Move to grant the exception for Abigail Flannigan of the Planning Board under section 19A.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Escobedo? Linda, we didn't hear you. I saw you, buddy.
And thank you for bringing this forward.
Um, how do, what is your vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you very much, and I, we appreciate your diligence about pursuing this matter. And it's, it's, it's a good example, isn't it?
Now I'm off to finish bedtime with my kids. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good for you.
I think Ms. Felshen, who's the next one, is on Zoom if we want to hear from her.
She's on Zoom.
She is, yeah, okay. Uh, Ms. Felshen, would you like to speak on your request?
Certainly. Well,
We can't hear you.
Lost the sound.
Not yet. No, we could hear you for a moment when you first started to speak.
How about now?
Now we can.
Okay. Too many different things to plug in. Okay, so first of all, having heard Ms. Flannigan, I think I may need to also seek a disclosure under 19A for MBTA communities. I don't, in fact, live within a half-mile of the station, although I very nearly do. But my property could be included in the district, so I had better file that form unless somehow you can make a decision on my conflict or lack of contract conflict without me actually submitting the form. But I am for you, before you tonight, over a matter involving the Community Preservation Committee. I have been appointed by the Planning Board, named as a Planning Board to serve as their member to the Community Preservation Committee, which has an application before it relating to Warner's Pond and what, if anything, to do about the pond. I abut the pond property, although not the open water of the pond itself. It is not at all clear what might happen to my property regardless of what is, would happen with the pond, whether the value would go up or down. But nevertheless, I could have a financial interest, and therefore I have sent in a disclosure form. And I could go into more detail if you would like.
All right, the Town Council says that we, um, that she has asserted that she believes she can be impartial in this matter. Accordingly, either conclusion by the Board is likely defensible, asking Ms. Felshen not to participate in the Warner's Pond matter or permitting her participation under section 19B1. What is our preference on that?
Wait, say that again, Town Council recommended. We have a choice or?
Said we have a choice.
Okay.
Accordingly, I'm skipping all of the reasoning that gets us to accordingly. Either conclusion by the Board is likely defensible. That doesn't sound very encouraging. Defensible, asking Ms. Felshen not to participate in the Warner's Pond matter or permitting her participation pursuant to General Laws 268A, 19B1.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Ms. Felshen, do you think you can be impartial in this matter?
Given that I have no idea what would happen in terms of financial interest regardless of what decision was taken, yes, I do so believe.
So I think the answer is no, right?
The answer is.
No, she can be impartial.
Said she didn't know what was gonna happen.
Oh, she can be impartial.
So therefore she can be impartial.
Okay.
In other words, she doesn't know right now if, if the decision would make her property value go up or down, or so she could be impartial.
Right. I think, I just respect the fact that she took, that she took the trouble to.
Yeah, yeah.
And that brought attention to the matter, and I'm sure this will assist in her impartiality on the matter. So do we have a motion on this, this item as well?
I can make, is it a motion to accept the disclosure? Is that the right terminology?
Approve.
Approve. Motion to approve the disclosure of, under section 19B1 of Sue Felshen, a Planning Board designated to the Community Preservation Committee.
Yeah, I think we're approving her participation.
If, if you look on the second to last page of, of the packet, there is a determination by appointing official, and it has language that you could use in your vote.
As an, it's, do you want me to read it? So the determination section says, as appointing official is required by General Laws 268A, section 19, I have reviewed the particular matter and the financial interest identified above by a municipal employee. I have determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee. And just for those listening, when you're appointed to a committee, you are considered a special municipal employee, and that's why we have that language in there.
Second. That was your motion, yes?
Yeah.
Yep.
Second. Roll call vote, Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Yeah, and I would just make the comment to Ms. Felshen's concern about the community preserve, um, community MBTA zoning, community zoning. As a member of the Planning Board, I think that section C, which we were talking about with Ms. Flannigan, basically covers everybody in town because if, if a matter affects 10% or more of the community, then you're considered to be able to act impartially on it because it's so, so broadly affecting. So I don't think that she needs to go to the trouble to submit yet another one of these for, for that particular matter. At least that would be my opinion.
Or even if she submits it, I don't think she needs to come back to the Select Board again. Um, you know, maybe it's on file, but I don't think any of us have a problem with her participating.
Especially since she's, in Ms. Flannigan's case, my understanding was she, she actually resides within the half-mile of, of, of a station, which means there's a likelihood that she's going to be relatively close to the 50% that needs to be zoned. But I think almost anybody else anywhere in town could claim that they might be near the zoning for the remainder.
50% can be outside of the half-mile.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It could apply to anybody, and therefore there's no particular reason for anyone to, to seek an exception just to deliberate on that.
Okay.
Well, that may be the case, but as Ms., if I may, as Ms. Flannigan said, suppose the actual district ended up being in a section of town that applied to fewer, where fewer than 10% of the population live, then that exception might not apply, and we don't know how the state will rule. Also, if you choose not to rule on a disclosure, that is the same as saying you declare that someone should not serve. So if I filed the disclosure and you do nothing, then I could not serve.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. It's, it's a lot of work for everyone that we don't know how the law works, but there it is.
Just trying to save you the trouble of coming back.
And I would like to save you the trouble of having to go over something, but.
I mean, it is, it probably should go without, it probably should go without saying that. I mean, in a, in a specific case where the zoning actually landed right on top of a particular member's property, and it was a very restrictive one, then there's nothing to say that as things develop, there might not be a more clear conflict that, that would require a disclosure at some future time. It's just not evident now.
Yep.
Right. And if those, if such a situation arises, we expect the person to not participate in that decision.
Yeah.
Right. And by not participating means not just not voting, but not being present at deliberation.
Right, and we've had many times when a Select Board member has had to leave the room for, for that reason, so, okay.
Yeah, and if they're not sure about it, then they could seek a, another.
Okay, so, all right, so are we done with that one?
Yes.
And we move on, and we voted on it, and then we have the last one, which is,
Jennifer Shuniman.
Right, and on that one, the recommendation of Town Council is that there is a non-wavable conflict.
Yes. Is Jennifer here with us tonight? I'm wondering if we could table this, Henry, until Jennifer is with us because there is a question here about whether she actually profits from the Discover Concord magazine, and she's not here to answer that. And I neglected to, to invite her to this meeting specifically. I'm the liaison to the Economic Vitality Committee. So I'm wondering if we could table this and ask her.
Why don't we continue it to our next meeting?
Can we do that?
Yeah, and I'd also note that I believe that this is two different disclosures. One involving the Economic Vitality Committee and the other one involving Concord 250 Subcommittee Publicity. So I think we might need to look at those separately or, or at least understand if we're handling them together, that we're sort of taking the same position on both.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and I also, and I also understood that there might be a contract involved at some point, and that we don't have that at this time, and that would change the scenario as well.
Mm-hmm. Do we need a motion to table this? Do we, do we need a motion to table this till next?
I don't think so. We're just making no decision on it. We decided to put it on the agenda for the August 28th meeting?
Perfect. I just, I guess I'd note, just for the record, that we're not denying it at this time.
No. We're just.
Just tabling it.
Yeah, we are kicking it down the road.
Down the road.
Okay. Okay, so that comes us, that brings us to committee appointments.
Move to correctly appoint James Vehi of 1544 Main Street to the Library Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2026, to restore staggered terms of committee membership. Move to correctly appoint Holly Legault of 242 Monson Road to the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee for a term to expire on May 31, 2028.
Second.
Roll call vote, Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Very good. All right, that brings us to the Town Managers' Report.
Thank you and good evening. Referring to the report from July 28, 2023, I wanted to make note that our Police Department conducted the annual youth academy. We had 24 students participate in the week-long experience. Sergeant Tia Manchuso, detectives Cara Palladino and Derek, Detective Derek Rodriguez were the three staff persons that were in charge of the academy. They had a great week. They had a field trip to Hanscom Air Force Base to visit Med Flight, to the courthouse, got to speak with the district attorney. It's really a great event for young people of this community, and there's talk that maybe next year there would be a, a second year for an older group of kids to keep them involved and maybe have a higher level of understanding of, of what the Police Department is all about.
Are, were these kids?
These are mostly middle-school age students, and so they're looking maybe, you know, eighth grade, eighth, ninth grade type of students. I also wanted to make note that Brian Whitney in the Fire Department was recently promoted from, from his position of captain to Assistant Fire Chief. This is the second Assistant Fire Chief position within the department. He assumed his new responsibilities on July 31. His particular area will be in training, and he will be taking the lead on evaluating paramedic-level ambulance service. Brian has been with the department since 1991. Assistant Fire Chief Walter Latta and our CPW Superintendent Aaron McClosko attended a statewide hurricane preparedness symposium presented by MEMA. You may recall that Walter and Aaron are both on the FEMA Region 1 Task Force and were recently deployed to Vermont and played significant roles in the, in the flooding rescue efforts up there. The Planning Board met on July 21. The Planning Board met on July twenty first. They had a presentation on one sixty six Commonwealth Ave, that redevelopment. There's information in the report about that or further information in the report about that. We also had our second MBTA Community Public Forum on July twenty sixth. This was a virtual meeting. There were sixty three participants. Um, most of of the meeting were breakout sessions. I think there probably were ten or so breakout sessions. A lot of great feedback from people who participated in that particular event. I wanted to make note that we will have a new military tour through our Visitors Center beginning in the fall of twenty twenty three, and this is a partnership with the National Guard. And then another note of our local love campaign. The local love campaign seeks to boost area businesses in West Concord that are impacted by the reconstruction of Commonwealth Ave. This is a joint effort with our vitality manager, Mimi Graney, um, communications manager, Donna McIntosh, tourism manager, Beth Williams, and Dory Carlin, who is one of the librarians at the Fowler Library. And I think I will stop there because we are running a little past time and take questions.
The entire report is in the meeting package.
It is. And and again, it's it's two weeks, the two the two weekly reports since your last meeting, July twenty eighth and August fourth.
Okay. Any questions? All right, then that moves on to um my remarks and um I have some, I think, that are time some remarks that are timely with regard to the importance of committee appointments. Um. And um one of our most important committees is the Zoning Board of Appeals, um, which is going to play a very significant role in some of the housing initiatives that are going to be considered. And um it is um it is a committee where there are a substantial number of vacancies and pending uh openings on the committee. And the um it is very important that people who are experienced in um in municipal government, in zoning law and in real estate, be carefully considered for appointment to that committee because um, it is an it is an assignment that requires essentially judicial uh analysis and skills and involves making decisions that have a very significant impact. Um, in in particular, if the the Novo project comes before the Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit, uh, the zoning Board of Appeals um will have a very significant role in deciding um, what the outcome is and how the town is going to deal with that particular project. So um, I think it's important with all committees that the members of this board um pay special attention to the um experience and experience and knowledge of committee appointments. Um, I also would like to say that having watched the activities of some committees, it reinforces in my mind um, the fact that it's really very important, as I see it, that even if committees have um, participation remotely, that the committee itself meet in person. Um, so that um, because the deliberations are um, just do not seem to stand up to the to the level that they should when every when when there's nobody present in the room, uh, including the committee members. Um. Also, with regard to that function which we're going to be dealing with um, in terms of the Novo, well, we'll get to that when we talk about the the Novo project. So that those are my comments for the for the for the evening. And then we'll move on to the.
Can I ask one logistical question? Um, when is our next meeting? Is it the twenty first or twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth. We our schedule said we would have a meeting on the twenty first if needed.
Right.
And so far, I have not heard any need.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so and if you're if people are paying attention to this to the schedule that's listed on the town website, uh, that that um, August twenty first meeting is labeled as such. And if anything comes forward that requires our attention, you know, um, bring it to my attention and we'll see if it's if we need to have a meeting um in that intervening week. Give people a little time off. So that brings us to the um. What is our next item on the agenda?
Liaison report.
Oh, okay.
No liaison reports.
Oh, liaison report.
Liaison reports.
Okay, I do we have liaison reports?
We do.
Sure.
Shall I go?
Sure. Well, we'll go. What are we gonna go? We'll go counterclockwise. No, I think, yeah, we'll start counterclockwise. You you're starting at kind of seven thirty on the clock. I don't mean on time. I mean on the dial.
Okay. Um, I too attended the planning board meeting that Carrie referenced in her Town Managers' Report where they discussed one sixty six Commonwealth Avenue. I think the planning board members had some excellent questions for the developer. And what was interesting to me about that conversation was this is a proposal for ten residential units. And you'll remember last year, the planning board um, came to the town and with a proposal for a warrant article to reduce the number of affordable units needed for these types of low residential units from twenty percent to ten percent. We didn't. They didn't move that forward, so we're still at the twenty percent. So this particular project has to meet the twenty percent um affordable um, units. And so I think it's a good test of whether that if if that article had gone forward or if it goes forward again, if that would matter to this development. So that's in process, and we'll find out what the developer comes back with in answer to the questions. Um, I also went to the MBTA Community Zoning with Roundtable Outreach. And again, that was great. I had a great breakout session. We got a lot of work done. Um, I think we actually started looking at areas within town where people would think that this type of zoning would be appropriate. On July twenty seventh, I went to the Board of Assessors Meeting. We'll talk more about that when we talk about the residential tax exemption. And on August first, I went to the West Concord Cultural District Committee Meeting, which is a great group of people, have a lot of energy. They're the people that bring us the Porch Fest. They bring us sale days in West Concord, and so they really work hard to make West Concord a vibrant community. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Carrie?
I too went to the MBTA Community Zoning Meeting. It was excellent. Looking forward to the next one. I um missed the meeting between the acting Concord rec, but then I watched the video and we'll talk about that more when we get to that item. The um PEG Access Negotiating Team has started a meeting. The people on the team are our consultant, Sue Buskey, Jason in IT, um, Carlin and Vince from the PEG Committee and myself. And we are starting to get organized for the upcoming negotiations. And finally, um, the two 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 nine task force met. Um, they're coming along very nicely. The member from the EPA was there and announced that on October eleventh, they're going to be doing a public forum on the status of the cleanup at two 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 nine Main Street. And this will be followed a few weeks later by the task force having another public forum um, to start to get public input on what are the public's ideas for the site, what are their concerns, et cetera. And that's it.
What was the date of that?
Um, the EPA meeting will be October eleventh.
October eleventh. Thank you.
Mark?
Sure. Um, the Recreation Commission met and they are about halfway through a Recreation Facility Strategic Planning Process, which I think we'll probably want to understand a little bit better when they when they get done with it. It's a really comprehensive look at at the town facilities and and how they're meeting the needs of of the community uh, and what options there might be uh to develop them further. Uh, the DEI Commission has been has been working hard. They've selected two key initiatives that they'll be working on uh this year. Uh, one is around BIPOC, uh, and the other is LGBTQIA plus issues and raising awareness around that. They would like to.
What was the first one?
Um, BIPOC and but indigenous people of color, black indigenous people of color. So it's around raising community awareness in each of those two dimensions. And so they're developing programming along that, and they'll be interested in coming to see us probably in September to to, you know, give us some information about what those how those programs are shaping up. So they've got leaders from within the group uh, working on each of those two issues as they put together their plans for this year. Um. The Climate Action Committee, which is actually meeting tomorrow night, is following a similar path. They the that merged committee is breaking up into smaller teams that are working on specific areas. One of the main focuses is to update the progress that's been made towards the Climate Action Plan and try and give us an assessment of where we really are with respect to the climate action goals that were identified. Um, and I also went to the MBTA Communities Forum and thought that was a good piece. And I guess I would remind people that there are some smaller events that have been taking place, I think, a couple of since then, and maybe one more even today, was it? Yeah.
I don't have.
Yeah, okay. So those are still going on, and there's plenty of time to learn about that.
Um, and the next one is, Mark, do you know when the next August twenty third?
I wanted to say sixteen.
August twenty third, August twenty third. Yeah, six thirty. It's virtual.
Okay, twenty third. Great. That's it for me.
Okay.
Linda?
Okay.
Linda? Linda?
Oh, Linda, yes, Linda.
Thank you. Um, I attended the Board of Assessors Meeting recently. Um, it's not my committee necessarily, but I wanted to learn more about the discussion we're going to have this evening um, on the residential exemption. Um, the White Pond Advisory Committee Task Force met and Shannon did a very nice job of um, presenting with them options for how they can address questions um, and formats that they can use to address questions to the public at large regarding White Pond, um, because that's part of their charge to to reach out to people beyond the immediate neighborhood. Um, I want to thank um Chris Carmody um for drafting a letter to the Joint Committee on Revenue at the State House uh, regarding um H Bill twenty five twenty nine and Act establishing a building permit fee for surcharge fee for affordable housing in the town of Concord. And um, we um talked about that letter, and that was sent off to our representatives as well as members of the Revenue Committee. And then um, I met with um the Concord Housing Authority, had a special meeting um uh, to determine whether or not they were going to accept or at least apply for the provisions of a small FMR, and that's a technical issue in terms of what uh, giving them some leeway in terms of rents um assessment. I'll leave it at that because it's a technical issue. Um, and then I also met with the MBTA Communities and then the um Affordable Housing Trust um met um to well, talk about recommendations we had regarding the Novo Riverside um proposal as well as preparing for the upcoming roundtable meeting. And I think that is the summary. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right, very good. So the next, thank you. Thank you, Linda. The um, next item on the agenda is the um comment letter for the Mass Housing Finance Agency um, on the Baker Avenue Project. And Mary has, Mary and I have worked together on um um, producing a letter um uh, that is in the package. And um, I I won't, I think that everyone on the on the board, I think, has received a copy this sometime today. But I might just um I might just breeze over some of the highlights of that, and that is we we say that um the um the Select Board as well as our local housing agencies are generally supportive of the generally supportive of the project and the recognize the benefits that that accrue from it. Um. We took note of a Keith's letter or Keith's memo um, to the to us, which I which will be attached to the letter as we submit. And the um, and the letter from Frank Feeley for the uh uh, the Concord Housing um
Foundation.
Foundation, which he had sent directly to Mass Housing. Um, the um, the positive points of the project, we recognize as the affordable units, including a mix of bedroom configurations suitable for various living arrangements. Um, and that expressed the hope that the affordable units will be intermixed seamlessly with the the market rate units. Um. That the location we recognize has a minimal impact on the historic character of the town, that there has been great emphasis by the developer on sustainability and all electric utilities, that its um, its location within a half mile of the West Concord commuter station may have some impact on the MBTA zoning initiative. Although it's unclear, at least to me, whether or not a project that's included under uh, comprehensive permit under forty B would really satisfy the requirements of the MBTA MBTA zoning. Um.
Why not?
Because it isn't a change in zoning. The MBTA says that we must have zoning that require that allows fifteen units per acre, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, whereas a comprehensive permit under forty B does not change zoning. It is a permit under existing zoning. But that's maybe a small point. It's we have no control over that. Um, the um it helps down to qualify for housing choice designation and the and includes footpaths to and retention of large mature trees. And it um, it it attempts to include at least some of the resources that would result from the building of a pedestrian bridge over the Aspet River. The the comments that were pretty much in common from all of those um, who didn't have comments, and we had an extensive compilation of comments that were made by town staff from all of the town um, uh, departments and agencies uh, which were not included verbatim in this letter because they were more appropriate, we thought, to the um uh, to the plan, the planning board's recommendations on the application that would come before the um, before the Board of Appeals. But the comments were that the number of units really um creates a large number of motor vehicles um, in an area that's already severely congested. Um, that the completion of that pedestrian bridge would eliminate a great deal of um, of um, of automobile traffic for people to get to West Concord Commercial Center. That the Baker Baker Avenue is a um, because of its its width and the um the width and the and the railroad. the width and the, and the railroad crossing pose a, a traffic problem and a access problem that needs to be dealt with in the planning process. That a five-story wood frame structure is, has some fire safety issues. And that Public Works pointed out that there was a, potentially a water pressure problem. They call that hydrostatic pressure, which would be, might be an issue even for domestic domestic water purposes and would be even more of a problem for a supplying a sprinkler system in a five-story building. That the proposed sewer design flow is considerably beyond what had been contemplated. The site is detailed in the, in the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. And the footprint of the building leaves a little room for open space and amenities attracted to families and seniors. And so those, that's kind of a summary of some of the concerns that were generally expressed. And then we just dealt with where, where we go forward from here, but the, the next step is for us to, for us to discuss and comment on this, this, this letter and to to authorize us to, to send it to the Mass, you know, Mass Housing. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you both for drafting this letter. I have a number of questions. So first of all, I was confused because there's a previous letter possibly that Megan drafted, also to Mr. Busby and signed by you.
Well, it wasn't signed, it was-
No, drafted, drafted, that's right.
That was a letter I referred to as summarizing the concerns of the town staff, which we thought was more particular on the, on the specific detail, what should be appropriate to, to use as part of the planning process, but not-
Not at this stage, you don't-
Not at this stage for the overview. I don't think that Mass Housing at this point is, they're interested in the feasibility of the project in general. And I don't think they're interested, interested in the details of the, of the permitting process.
Okay, because I thought that letter was really good, then at least we should save it then for, for that other, okay. Then the next question I have is, the first thing you said was that in the letter, we're generally supportive of the project. And I think when we had the discussion, most or all of us are, were generally supportive. I think that's correct. But I didn't really see in this letter where exactly it says that we're generally supportive. There's sort of this indirect sentence, but but I guess I'd like it to be more directly stated. So like in the second paragraph, in like about halfway through, it says, "Like the Select Board, both of these express strong support." It's kind of indirect and I think I, I just would prefer if it said "The Select Board is generally in support of this project. These are the attractive aspects and these are our concerns, but we're generally supportive." I think it should just say we're generally supportive.
I agree, I agree with that.
Okay.
And then there's a few grammatical problems and spelling thing, it, it needs a spell check.
It does, and the font changes from-
Yeah, and there's spacing issues and stuff, so, okay. And then my next comment is where it says, "Comments received by the Board raise the following concerns." This is on the bottom of page two. Part A. The second line where it says, "Suggestions to mitigate this include" better, designing better access to Route 2?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, I, I think it should say designing direct access to Route 2. That was the request of the Transportation Committee. They don't, they wanted to go, not through West Concord, but directly, okay.
Okay.
And then in part C, I don't agree with this statement. The town does not need 50 affordable units to satisfy its receivable need. I think that's sending a really bad message. I think we want to get ahead of the game and we don't only want to satisfy the SHI for one year or two years. So that's, I, I think, what, what point do you want to make in this sentence?
Is that the size of the, the size of the project is not, is not-
Too large, you see.
Yeah, basically.
Why don't we just say that?
Necessary.
Okay, fine, why don't we just say that? I don't really feel comfortable seeing we want as few affordable units as we can get away with it.
No, no, okay, so I think you said that elsewhere in the letter, that this, the size was-
I agree, I think we've already said that. And then finally, in F, you're saying kind of the same thing again. The footprint leaves a little open room. It's almost the same thing again. Maybe if it was smaller, you'd have more room for these amenities in, in part F there. Okay, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
I had a similar reaction to C, so I would be comfortable with striking that whole section, but I do, I do think-
Give it a shot.
Yeah, because I, I'm not sure that, that-
If I could get away with it.
Comments around the rent see even is particularly helpful either.
All right, I'm happy to let that go.
Okay, my, my reaction is I think that the, the general message is that the, the, the scale of this project may be a little bit bigger than, than the site can handle and I, and I'd be comfortable. I, I'm both generally supportive and have, share that concern.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I make a comment?
Yeah, please, I welcome your comments.
I want to note that I have a concern about mentioning the pedestrian bridge.
The what?
The pedestrian bridge.
Yes.
And that is because talking about mitigation with that project and saying anything about the developer being required to build the trail on the property or that a public easement be granted could be a concern because they're on the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP program, the bridges. And the project is required to follow all federal and state processes as it relates to the acquisition of any private right-of-way. So I think we need to be careful about insinuating that the developer should contribute to this because it's already on a list of a program where we could have funding towards this project. I have a town planner on here too, if she could explain it better than me.
Well, I think it-
You don't want to jeopardize that. There's a lot of specific rules and regulations around acquiring the right-of-way and so-
Well, if they, if they offer to pay for it, we can always say no, thank you.
We can say yes, but we shouldn't have a letter saying, "Would like it if you did this," I think.
Well, we would like it if they did. But, but I, I, I mean, I, my, my sense was that I, I wanted to, I wanted to send the message, if you will, to the developer that we wanted them to, in connection with this $100 million project, to bear as much of the cost of the infrastructure and amenities that would be required or would be desirable in order to complete the project successfully, so.
Can I ask a question? Are you saying that you're, we're jeopardizing getting the money through the Department of Transportation if we have this sentence in here? That seems to me to be-
Yes, I think it could, we're not, yes. It could, it could jeopardize it. And I, I just want to minimize any risks.
This is Linda. I too noted that comment. And you know, as I, in, if the town planner is present, that would be helpful for her to comment. But I understood her earlier comments in meetings I've attended, that should some other project that's on the tip become, not be ready to be executed, we could move up. And anything that jeopardizes that also is an issue. So yeah, I think there's some sensitivity on this one.
Well, but by writing this letter, we're not requiring anybody to do anything.
Well-
But I think we're, we should probably hear from the planner, but I think we're, we're addressing a state agency who's who's trying to determine the feasibility of doing the project by including some statement about a condition that has to do with a possible discussion with the developer. And so I don't think it's particularly relevant. I do think the broad point that there's insufficient pedestrian and in fact even vehicular access directly from the site to the town center is a valid point. And you know, we could more broadly say something along the lines of it would be better if there was a way to, you know, given the, the MBTA is really between the town center and this particular project site. It would be good to find a way to improve that access and just leave it at that. And we all know what we're talking about.
I think we have, we have, we have said that.
Yeah.
In the benefits, we talk about how the proposed bridge will link us to the village and improve the economic vitality. You're saying something a little bit stronger than that?
Well, I, I think we're, if, put it this way, if this project were to go forward and there were no improvements in the Baker Avenue crossing for the, over the railroad tracks and there was no pedestrian bridge. Now that, that, we all know how easy it would be to walk from 300 Baker Avenue to the MBTA station right now. It's, it's not pretty and it's not easy and it's not direct.
Right.
So those are concerns that I think are, are important to raise at every opportunity.
Right, it just- I, I think that my first comment, that this first letter that we're not including, it lists all kinds of really important details like the, all of these traffic issues and the flood plain and all of these problems. And to only highlight the Aspet Pedestrian Bridge.
No, I think we're doing that because we're saying there's a specific problem with that, which is it might jeopardize funding from the state, whereas the other ones don't get us in that trouble.
No, 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 I'm saying the opposite. I'm saying take it out of this letter because it is maybe going to jeopardize.
You're saying take it out.
Right, because none of these other details, which are just as important, like fire safety and traffic safety and all of these other details in the other letter are not being included. So why are we including this? Let's take out also-
Because that's, because that is a very big expense. And if, if we can get somebody else to pay for it, I would much rather have somebody else pay for it and the town have to pay for it if it's necessary, as a necessary-
Could we hear from Elizabeth?
Of this, of this project.
Can we hear from Elizabeth as far as the process to get the money from the state to build this bridge?
Yeah, is it really on the tip?
So the project has received a project notification and has received a, a number as a project number in the universe of projects under the Transportation Improvement Program. It has not been specifically programmed for a year. The tip is a five-year revolving document. And as Linda mentioned, there are some very large projects that are programmed for a specific year that don't move forward and they get pushed back a year. And if there's smaller projects that are ready to go, they can be advanced. The concern that Megan brought up is currently in the realm of projects, this, the Aspet River Trail and Bridge is programmed for approximately $8 million. There is a specific process, federal and state, when you have a project listed on the tip that deals with right-of-way issues and the acquisition of any right-of-way. And that process, if the town were to move forward and as the, no, excuse me, the Novo Riverside project does get filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Sorry, hang on one second. Sorry. There needs to be a very clear indication that the town cannot require the developer to provide any type of public right-of-way as a mitigation for this comprehensive permit. That would jeopardize funding for the project as far as the requirements for acquisition of right-of-way. And the town would then be forced to go through a significant process for fair market value and acquisition of that right-of-way. So you, you cannot require the applicant provide that right-of-way as part of this comprehensive permit because we have not gotten to the point in the federal and state process for acquisition of right-of-way. And it would jeopardize the funding if we were to do that at this time.
Elizabeth, I'm, I'm confused right now between, we're asking them to pay for it and you're talking about right-of-way. So I'm a little bit confused between what we're asking for and the right-of-way getting in the way of the state funding the bridge. So what are we, what, why are we talking about right, help me?
So this bridge is not on public property. This bridge, it goes from public property in the parking lot at the MBTA commuter rail, goes across private property for Volunteers of America at Concord Park. Then it goes across private property and then would continue where this project is being proposed. They have incorporated into their project and they will build as part of their project a path that goes around the buildings and out to Baker Ave that does meet the state requirements for Mass DOT requirements for the construction, the widths, the ADA compliance. They have already incorporated that into the project. But the other two portions where the actual bridge is located, the town has a conservation restriction on those, those two portions. And within that conservation restriction, the town does have the right to build this connection. But the funding for the bridge, you have to go from a public right-of-way to a public right-of-way.
Okay.
Transportation Improvement Programming Funding cannot be spent solely on private property with no public benefit. So there will be a requirement for an easement to go from the MBTA commuter rail parking lot out to Baker Ave. And the applicant has incorporated that into their project. But as Megan commented, I, I want to be, you know, very careful that we don't jeopardize any of the project funding or get into a situation where we are, even though the applicant is incorporating that connection into their project, that we have somehow run afoul of the federal and state requirements and end up having to pay fair, fair market value for that, that public use, that public right-of-way.
Look, this, this letter is not imposing any requirements on anybody. It is merely a statement of what we would desire to have happen. And if it comes down to the fact that this bridge cannot be built or state money is not available for it, us, for us to have said in this letter that it's our wish that that cost be borne by the developer, I don't see how that interferes with any legitimate concern.
I do.
And, but, and that this is not a condition that is being imposed under the comprehensive permit or by the- under the comprehensive permit or by the Board of Appeals. The fact is that there are concessions that are necessary from the town for the builder, for the developer to go forward with this project that we can negotiate with the developer that are outside of the comprehensive permit and are outside of what the Board of Appeals can impose. And if the, if the, um, developer needs waivers or concessions such as for instance, waiver of sewer improvement fee or development by the town of water and sewer resources. Those are things that we are able to negotiate, which would not jeopardize the status of, of, of the comprehensive permit because they're totally outside of it. And it seems to me that we should not give away the, uh, the, uh, ability that we have to negotiate some of the rather substantial costs that will be imposed on this town and, and have the developer as, assume as meant as much of that cost as possible. And all we're doing is writing a letter to the Mouse Housing saying, this is what we would desire. We are not saying we're imposing a requirement. And if it turns out that they say this, we can't, we can't ask for this, then we won't ask for it.
Okay. So in my, in my opinion, there are a substantial number of concessions that we could be looking for. And if there's a possibility or a strong likelihood of TIP funding for the Aspet River Bridge, then I think we should go for the concessions for all of these other things that are spelled out. Um, that we need. And also I don't like the idea of alerting one state agency that we might be asking for this concession. Or, and, um, you know, another state agency could find out and then not, I, I agree with Megan and Elizabeth that we're putting the TIP funding in jeopardy. And I think there are so many other concessions that we need to ask.
You're saying we should ask for more because of.
No, I'm saying to take it out of this letter. We can still go to the bargaining table and ask them to pay later, but I don't think it has to be in this letter.
So Henry and, oh, this is Linda. I wonder if there's another approach to this, which is that, um, we, and maybe it's already in there, forgive me, I, I can't remember everything that I read earlier. Whether or not, um, a, a request that the developer can consider providing commuter connectivity or, or mobile connectivity to the MBTA sta- station. And, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, that's another, um, arm of this that we could do now in this letter.
Well, I think that's kind of, I, I think that's a great ideal and it's kind of what Mark was saying earlier, which is just, you know, address commuter transport or
Yeah.
from, from this to the village and to the highway or whatever.
General.
And I don't think, Henry, I don't think there's any downside of taking it out of this letter. We can still, in other words, if we take it out of this letter, because Terry, I think Terry makes a good point about alerting one state agency of when we can still ask for it later if we decide that we're, there's.
It's always hard to ask for more later.
Well, we're not asking now. We're, actually, we're, we're just alerting. We're not.
Well.
This is, these, we're not negotiating with them now. We're not.
Be. This is the beginning of a negotiating. This is the way I see this letter.
What?
Is the beginning of a negotiating.
Then I think we should include all of these other things that we took out, the ones that are in the other letter. All this stuff about the flood plain, the direct access to Route Two, the public safety, the height of the building. These are really good points.
We have dealt with those in this letter. We've dealt with the height. We've dealt with the fire safety.
Missing.
Without the details, we have dealt with the, but keep in mind also that this letter is due tomorrow.
Okay. Do you think, Henry, do you think that Mark's suggestion and Linda's suggestion of making it more of a broader statement, which is the developer should, I, Mark, you said it and Linda, you said it better than I can, as far as make them aware of making ease of commuter.
Or just access to the town center needs to be improved.
Something like that without specifying, without specifying that we're asking them for money.
Um, increasing congestion. Yeah.
Yeah. And I have a, a
Are you okay?
Kind of a broader question about, under the next steps, the very first part of that is the select board proposes that the developer and the select board enter into a host community agreement. Is a host community agreement actually part of the 40B application process? Or is that something that we're just creating?
Do you want to answer that?
No.
It is?
No. Mary says, can I answer that? And I said, yes. I didn't answer the question.
This is something that, um, Keith Bergman, um, highlighted in his letter to us. Um, as inputted, he said, he strongly recommended that we negotiate a host this and to address things that might not be addressed in the zoning board of appeals. So this is something, so this is really just a placeholder for that? Cause, because I'm not clear on what exactly that means.
When, when Liz Russ addressed us the other week and it, my, I'm not sure who Mr. Busby, is that the name?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But is that the subsidizing agency standard for approval?
Yes.
So she indicated in, in her presentation to us that there were seven things that they were concerned about.
Yep.
And we're not really getting at many of those things in this letter at all. What we're, because those seven things were, is the project eligible for subsidy under the program guidelines? Is it generally appropriate, which we are talking about?
Right.
As conceptual, um, is the site generally appropriate? Is the conceptual project generally appropriate? Does the proposed project seem feasible, given comparable rents and sale prices? Is it feasible given land valuation, private limitations and program requirements? Is the applicant eligible and is the applicant have site control? And so it seems like we're kind of far afield from
We are.
Those questions.
You're right, but it's not, she also said that we could pretty much say whatever we wanted.
Okay.
And it wasn't a form that we were going to fill out to answer their questions. It was more of our first conversation, you know, our fir-, our opening dialogue to them, which is we're generally supportive and we have these concerns based on what we heard from the community.
So my suggestion would be under, is the project seen feasible? You know, given comparable rents and
We have no clue.
The feasibility, the, one of the feasibility issues, at least in my mind, is the accessibility to the, to the property through the remainder of the community. And that's the big, oh, you know, the obstacle to this project is, is how easily can you sort of get at this site? Or is it going to be sort of an orphaned place that all you can do is drive in and out of with a car? Which is, I think that sort of, if we had to articulate the underlying concern, that's what it is.
You might not be able to do that on certain times of the day.
Yeah, exactly. Which is why the need for alternative access methods to the, to the, so it's not the.
I would be happy with putting a statement like that in the letter and removing the, the specific ask for the, um, to help us pay for the pedestrian bridge.
I agree. I think, I think Mark, um, Linda and I all agree with that. And also that we add in the beginning somewhere that we are generally supportive. I think, you know, again, that really needs to be in there.
So, yeah, do you want to have Mark craft something or Henry, what do you want to do? Henry, what would you like to do now?
Um, it sounds like we need to, um, redraft the letter.
I think we only need two changes. One is to say that we're generally supportive. Um, well, three changes. Take out, we're asking for money for the pedestrian bridge and add a statement that I think Mark can craft for us.
Right. And change, or better to direct in, in part A at the bottom there. Shannon's got that.
I think four changes. That's right. Five changes.
Well, Mark, can you repeat the wording?
So, okay. Yeah. Looking at it specifically, we, under the next steps area, we have four things that we're talking about addressing in the host community agreement. And our discussion has focused on letter B, which talks about the bridge. And I would propose that we replace the specific reference to a pedestrian bridge with a broader reference to, um, the feasibility of the project is compromised by the very limited pedestrian a- access to the site from the business, from the commercial area. So what, what we would look for is ways to mitigate the, the limitations of the limited auto tra- auto capacity and pedestrian access. So I think that's, if we focus on that specifically to the West Concord Commercial Area, that's all basically saying, we could solve this in a lunchways. We could solve it with a bridge. We could solve it with a, you know, something else that a tunnel.
So ways to improve traffic congestion and improve pedestrian access.
To the West Concord Commercial Area.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah. And just drop the word bridge.
Yeah. Ways to mitigate traffic congestion and improve pedestrian access to the West Concord Commercial Area.
Right.
Right.
Are we good?
Okay.
Who's going to do it?
Shannon's got it.
Shannon's got it.
Got it.
I'll send it to Henry to.
Great.
Great. Okay.
Henry, this is Prashar. Can I just, oh, and I apologize for interrupting. Can I just ask a question about the letter? Um, and I apologize because I just joined, uh, about five, 10 minutes ago, so I missed the opening discussion.
I didn't hear the question.
He didn't ask a question. He asked, he can ask a question.
No. Can he ask? Yes. Would you like to ask a question?
Yeah, thank you. Um, and I apologize. So the finance committee, on behalf of the committee, I sent a letter to you and others last night, asking for some information from the developer about their estimate of both revenue and cost for the project, based on data that they might have for similar projects. There's maybe three sentences in there that if possible, would you be open to cutting and pasting so we can get that information to be, uh, incorporated into our five-year revenue and cost projections as we think about um, the impact of this project in the short term?
Did you get a letter from Prashar last night?
Uh, I, I think I did get something very, very long.
So, uh, so Prashar, you've got, you've, you said you have three requests?
There are a couple of sentences in there that can simply be cut and paste. Happy to read them now or, uh, I think, uh, um, Carrie also has them.
Yeah, actually, can you, can you, can you do that, Prashar? Can you read them quickly?
Yeah. Let me just quickly read it right now.
Thank you.
Um, so just, okay. So ba- basically, uh, we asked, uh, uh, request for the developer's estimate of the potential change in town revenue, uh, e.g. from higher property valuation, as well as potential changes, changes in town costs, e.g. education, emergency services, et cetera. We also ask that the developer base their estimates on similar, uh, projects completed in the past three to five years. And then finally, we would also ask that the data sources and brief description of methodology be included as well.
But, but the purpose of this letter is just to let the state agency know that we're generally supportive. I don't think we're at a stage of asking all of those details yet. And if we are, then again, I want to include all those other details that we keep leaving out. So I, I don't think, I don't think it's appropriate to put in all of those questions right now.
Actually, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of, um, inclined to, to want to know the potential revenue, um, both from the building permit and the ongoing property tax, um, and an estimate of impact to town services at this point.
And, and just to provide a little bit of context, the reason we thought it would be important to hear from developers, of course, you know, the town and the schools and the, uh, the assessors will be developing our own estimates. So we thought it would be helpful just to get a second set of opinions from folks that have been doing this for a long time. Again, a way to triangulate, uh, what we ought to put into our five-year projections. That's all. Thank you.
So I'm wondering whether, based on the presentation that the, the, the team provided us with at our last meeting, whether they might be interested in responding to those questions if presented directly to them.
Right.
Well, we did ask them when they were here.
And they seemed relatively, they seemed relatively open.
They had vague, vague swags.
But why are we asking the state agency to provide these answers?
That's a good question.
Are we?
The letter is going to the, to the mass housing agency.
We're just telling you what our concerns are.
Yeah.
Not asking them to answer those questions. So, I mean, if we, uh, and it certainly would be appropriate to, to, to have something in here, um, but that would indicate that our, um, our our conclusion about how feasible this project was, would have, uh, would be influenced by the, um, by the, by the cost, the cost incurred by the town, uh, to provide the services that are, would be required by building and, um, operating the project.
So I, I think those questions are, in my experience, questions that are asked of a 40B developer, but at a different stage in the review process. And, and I think it would make sense to, to send that directly to the developer, even if those questions, you felt that they were asked at the last meeting. I think we could follow up with a letter asking for, um, them to be thinking about answering, but I would agree that's, those answers aren't going to come from the state. And I don't know that the state would be requiring, um, the state's not going to make a decision about this project based on the answers to those questions.
And I'm not sure that's actually, the, the cost to the town is probably not an appropriate issue for a 40B comprehensive permit. The feasibility that is referred to in 40B is the feasibility to the developer.
Yeah.
Not the feasibility to the town. So if we're going to deal with these issues about what it's going to cost us, we need to have another way to deal with it outside of the 40B environment. Because I don't think those are legitimate issues in that discussion. And so to the extent that we have the ability to control other aspects of this project, such as, the best example is a sewer improvement fee or waivers of parking requirements or that type of thing. We do have the ability to then ask some of these other questions about essentially, if the cost to the town of this project are going to be, uh, difficult to bear, we're going to negotiate those based on things that they need from us that are outside of 40B. Just as with Junction Village, it was the TIF, it was the con- cash contributions. There were other things that were needed from the town in order to make the project feasible, regardless of whether they qualified for a comprehensive permit.
So why don't we follow up with the developer? We would provide the developer a copy of this letter as a courtesy that's going to the state and we could also flag other items that we would like to have further conversation, maybe included, including what is on the second letter and the finance committee's points.
Exactly why I wanted to have all those things in this letter, because I expected that it would go to the developer and they would be on notice that we were had, we had expectations with regard to cost sharing. Oh, and I think if you don't raise it now, it's going to be difficult to raise it later. This is, we're doing it at a time when there is basically, where there's no downside for us to raise these questions now. And it's always much easier to ask for things in the beginning than it is to ask for them when you get down the road.
So I think Carrie is saying, let's ask for them now.
Yes.
In a separate letter to the developer.
No, I'm saying, put them in this letter and send a copy of this letter to the developer. That's what I'm saying.
What, okay, what, Carrie, can you enlighten us on this host community agreement that Keith talked about? Is that an avenue for us to talk directly with the developer now?
Sure. So I, and I am not, I'm not the 40B expert and I, I wish Liz Russ was here to help us out.
For Keith.
My understanding is that host, the host community agreement is an integral part of the, the friendly 40B process.
Okay.
Um, and that's what makes it different than this process. I, I liked Keith's suggestion about, about trying to negotiate a host community agree.
Right.
I think it's part of the other process. It, it would have to be agreed to by the developer here, because this is It would have to be agreed to by the developer here, because this is a quote unquote unfriendly 40B, because we're below the.
They seem to be very open to conversation. So I'm wondering if this would be, again, something we could pursue with them through you so that we could in fact deal with them directly and not have to go through this other vehicle, which is this letter to Mass Housing as a way to talk with them. We can talk with them directly and quickly and get some of these questions answered. The Prashar has brought up, the Finance Committee's brought up, that Terry has brought up. That might be a better way than to load them all into this letter.
Right, we could even ask them to come back and meet with us. Or we could send a letter saying, would you be willing to discuss having a host agreement, um, a community host agreement, whatever it's called.
But it is a merely being under the 40B threshold does not make it a non-friendly 40B. Because if the developer needs concessions from the town, as was say, was the case in Junction Village, it has to be friendly, because if it isn't friendly, the developer doesn't get those concessions that they need to go forward with the project, even if they get the comprehensive permit.
Can we hear from Keith? Keith is on, Keith Bergman is here.
Hi, thanks all. I was watching on my computer and just logged in on Zoom, uh, the, uh, and I, I agree with, uh, what, what, uh, what I'm hearing from Carrie and others about the, uh, the host community agreement. It's, it's essentially a separate document. It's not subject to the, um, comprehensive permit process. But it's a side agreement that would be entered into between the town through the select board and the developer on whatever areas that you can voluntarily agree on. And we already see that there, that there may be things of mutual interest that we can enter into, which are technically outside of what the zoning board of appeals could require in a, um, uh, in a comprehensive permit decision. But nevertheless, they might be things that the town and the developer want to agree to. And the host community agreement simply gives you that document to, to record, uh, in a, in a, in a separate document that's, uh, that's as good as a deed restriction, uh, that, that says what your, um, those voluntary, um, conditions would be. Thanks. And we did it, we did it in Littleton. It's not subject to, uh, to the, the HCA. Host community agreement is not subject to the HAC, the Housing Appeals Committee, uh, the, uh, which is the state board that, that can overrule a zoning board of appeals. But it is a way, it's a handy way for the developer and this, and the town through the select board to just say what, what, uh, what you can do for each other.
And how do we initiate that? How do we initiate that, Keith?
Well, I think that for, for right now, and one of the reasons why the trust wanted to essentially give you, uh, you know, connect all the dots, uh, of, of all, in our memo that we sent last week. If you provide a copy of that to the, uh, to the developer, as you're going to provide a copy of, of this letter to Mass Housing, I, I think it would be well to invite a, a, a general discussion uh, on, um, you know, the, on, uh, just for the sake of having lines of communication as things come up. Uh, and the trust did want to say that if there's anything that we can do as a trust to help in, in, um, in that negotiation process, we're happy to do that. But it's the select board's call of, of how it would happen. Thanks.
Well, yeah, and the letter that we've been discussing here already says that the next steps is to propose that the developer and the select board enter into a host community agreement.
Right.
And we just spent this time discussing what, you know, four of the major points for that host community agreement would be. So I think we're clearly opening the door to that process already.
Okay, so it's.
And I believe that, um, there are people on the Zoom call, I think, who are part of the development, if I recognize some of the names right. So.
There, listen.
I, I think we should probably decide how to send this letter.
I think we were there and then at the last minute, Prashar asked if he could insert. And then I think the sense of the board, I'm thinking is to not do that and to not include those in this letter and include those instead in our conversation with them through, when we talk about the host agreement. What do, am I, did I hear that correctly?
I, I would agree with that. I think that what the Finance Committee is asking for is information that might help their modeling of the, both the revenue and cost side to the, to the town of that. And it seems very sensible to do that. But I think we're already identifying, you know, specific issues related to the development of the property that, that, that also have cost impacts, some of them being one-time cost impacts, which is, which is also makes sense.
I mean, they're great, they're great questions. It's just this, this particular letter is not the vehicle. I think that's what we're, okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Good. What's, what's the motion going to be?
Move to approve the comments compiled for the letter for the Novo Riverside Commons 40B application with the amendments that we've identified tonight, five of them, and authorize, um, Mr. Dane to sign the letter on the board's behalf.
Second.
Miss, uh, roll call, Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Mr. Howell.
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman.
Aye.
Very good.
So the next draft will come from.
Shannon.
Shannon. Me.
And it has to go out tomorrow. I think that's the deadline.
It is the deadline. So I'll try. All right, so, um.
Very good.
There, that takes care of that. And the next item on the agenda is, um.
The Hanscom letter.
For the, uh, Hanscom.
Yep.
Hanscom Field. Okay, good. So Carrie, you have, um.
I think this will be quick. Um, I, I first want to just ask Linda, um, as the HAPS liaison. Linda, have you heard from Doug Lucenti or any of the other towns?
No, there's no update.
Okay, well, that's the same that I think I have repeatedly asked, but I, I think it's just taking a while for all of the different boards to meet. It's vacation season. And so we don't have any update right now or any new revisions to the letter.
We need now to talk about the, um.
So then, so, and I would add that, uh, this, this evening, this evening, I got a flood of material from Anna Rasmussen, uh, which was a, um, commentary, uh, on the letter and a lot of other material, which I got like about an hour before this meeting started. So, um, I brought, I think, did I bring copies of this to where I put my stuff? Um, I can give, I can give you.
Yeah, um, I know they have comments. I don't know if I've received them or not.
Well, it was addressed to me only.
Okay. Did you get it by email?
Yes, by email.
All right, if you just forward it, that's fine. If that's the easiest.
So is that, and then as far as the.
I don't know how that's going to tie in with the other four towns either, the other three towns.
It's got material, it's just all it's.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't had time to read it. Okay.
So it was, uh, it was not respectful of the timeliness that it was required. It, it started out by saying, we understand that you're going to be discussing this tonight. And it came in like, you know, five o'clock.
I know, yeah.
So, um, okay, so we'll deal with it. So the other issue on Hanscom is the issue of our, um, uh, the other material we have with regard to the engagement of environmental council.
Right.
Um, and I see Mr. McGregor is here. Mr. McGregor, you're here. Yes, good evening. And, um, the, the preface to that is that, uh, the sense that many of us had is if we want to, um, um, get a satisfactory result, um, in terms of, um, bringing forth our objections to the, this development, that the, um, um, certainly while developing public opinion may have some impact and contacting, writing letters to legislators and, um, signing petitions may have, and putting up yard signs may have some impact. But what is going to have the most serious and most effect, serious effect on this is, um, challenging the environmental review and being aware of the environmental review process, which is a technical and legal process. And our thought was that, um, the best expenditure of our time and money was to, uh, to engage the services of an environmental expert to both monitor, monitor the environmental review process and to, um, provide us with consulting services for a fixed fee, uh, for a specified, um, uh, scope of services, um, which would, um, help us to stay on top of the situation. Would you like to talk about that, Greg?
I'm Gregor McGregor of the law firm of McGregor, Leger, Stevens. We're the oldest environmental law firm in New England, which means we're the last man standing of the original. But the result is we do work for with and against cities and towns. And so we have a full understanding of politics, personalities, finances, and the needs of municipalities who are faced with large projects, especially large infrastructure or commercial projects. And in reaction to your good introduction, I would say, number one, key to this town being effective in this board especially is to have information. Otherwise, you're just reacting. Otherwise, you're just the tail on the dog. So I propose that you use the public records law, which is therefore you're using to do a comprehensive request to Hanscom for all the information concerning the project. This is not to say they're going to deliver it tomorrow. Give 10 days to respond and might put a cost on copying if copying or research is involved. But the point is to make it clear that you want all the information that Hanscom has in all the forms, electronic and print and otherwise, that Hanscom has it. Period. That's so you have the baseline information in order to decide what you're going to do as a business-like way. Uh, how are you going to participate in the MIPA process involving environmental impacts and the discretionary decision, largely discretionary, the Secretary of Environmental Affairs MIPA office, deciding if the study is adequate? That's all that law requires, is that it be adequate? Now, that's a term of art defined in the rules and regulations and the court cases. And it's important for you to know the information against which you might come to a different conclusion about the adequacy of the environmental study. That's just one example. Uh, there are other, um, impacts that are not cognizable under MIPA. There are impacts to the municipalities that end up hosting this facility. I use that term advisedly. There's air noise, pollution, vibration, um, uh, interruption that might be called public nuisance. Then there's traffic and others that you might want to communicate separately from whatever your comments end up being under the MIPA review. So I propose comprehensive environmental, um, targeting of information that Hanscom possesses using the Public Records Act. I know you're familiar with that act because you can use it to obtain your information on all kinds of matters. Uh, that's a start. If you wanted to expand such a request to get such information in the possession of Massport, that'd be a different request. If you wanted the information from the Mass Aeronautics Commission that they might have, that'd be a different request. Wanted to go beyond the hand, this project and get all such projects that are under consideration or in the pipeline at Hanscom, that'd be a bigger request. But I've given you a modest budget, what other towns retain our law firm for as special counsel to obtain, uh, important foundational information in order to participate fully in the environmental and the public reviews. And we'd be honored to work for the town I live in.
And that would also involve your, um, reviewing that information that is produced and giving us your advice as to what the appropriate response might be.
First, uh, let me answer it this way. The information is for you. We're not going to be you. You have agencies, boards, officials, experts, that you'll want to share that information with. You might want to have a, uh, one officer, one official, one employee organize and digest and, uh, circulate the information, or you could have us do it. It's a choice whether you have the in-house capacity and you have the agencies and boards and commissions, or just an individual who's an expert. You want a detail to do it. But it will be thousands of pages. So yes, we will do our best to obtain it, negotiate a fee if they want to be paid, advise you politically about the efforts to get whatever they decide to try to withhold, advise you on the reasonableness of paying the copying and research charges if they deign to want to charge a host community for that. Uh, and if you want, we will, um, skim the information. That's usually what we do at the public information obtaining phase of work. This is not substantive legal work. We're not designing a strategy for the town based only on what we can pull teeth and get out of Hanscom. I hope that helps to answer your question. This is about trying to get information that Hanscom may or may not want to share with you. Our advice certainly, however, will be about what to do if they violate the, the public records law.
Um, I have a question on, um, why the first phase would go to Hanscom and not Massport? Do you anticipate a big difference in what the documents are for this project at the two agencies?
Be the volume of information, yes. The difference would be the volume of information.
For the same prop, for the Hanscom expansion project, you think there's more documents at Massport than there are at Hanscom?
There'd be documents about the relationship with Hanscom and long-term plans for Hanscom that Hanscom may or may not have or be willing to share.
Some, I'm not sure that we need the first phase. I'm, I'm thinking what we really might need is the information that Massport has.
That's, that's your choice.
I'm just thinking about it, that they're the decision makers here. Um, just throwing that out. Maybe that's what we really want.
An illustration of what that would ask for, the communications, uh, with all parties by members of the Massport Board.
Oh, yeah, that's big.
Well, about the project.
About the project.
Or about the sponsors.
No, I know, but.
The impact.
Still.
But you see how big that could be.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean. That's, that's, that's a large board.
By with, between to and from members of the Massport Board and all, um, employees and consultants. All contracts with consultants, all advice, timetables, progress reports from consultants. Again, about the project. Yeah, I think that would be a more extensive and more comprehensive, uh, information salvo across the bow of the project.
Mary, um, thank you, Mr. McGregor. I read your resume and I'm impressed. I'm, I'm honored that you're here with us tonight. I really respect your background. Um, and I do know that the people in Concord have, um, a strong feeling about Hanscom and their expansion plans. Um, I'm a little bit concerned that this looks like this could escalate quickly and become quite expensive if we really wanted to pursue this. So I guess I'm asking, do we, what do we have in the budget? And, and then what would be the timing of these? So that if we had to go back to the town to get more money, um, Terry, can, Carrie, can you answer that?
Sure.
Sure. So the the budget that we have for legal for fiscal '24 is $425,000. During the regular course of business and our existing legal commitments, we can expect to spend 300 to 360,000 of that.
That's through the end of June.
Through the end of June. So that leaves us with about 65 to 125,000. One of the reasons this is before you is because this particular action wasn't contemplated when we put the budget together. At your next meeting, the end of August, you will hear from the 2229 Main Street Task Force that is interested in a legal budget as well. And so I it makes sense to have this board weigh in on how you would like to see the the remainder of our legal budget expended, how you would like that divvied up. And I think you need to keep in mind that during the course of the year, we always have things pop up. You know, so general legal is is covered in, you know, general advice, but if if we have a new suit that's filed, that is not included in the numbers that I provided.
So can I just ask a follow-up question? So I think the quote we have here is for Phase 1A, right? And how long do you think that would take to complete before we had to actually
We'll get the request out in about two weeks.
Okay. And then when
What happens next is up to the recipient and whether they decide to acknowledge and acknowledge the dates by which they'll give us the information or the fees they want to impose for the reasonable cost as the law requires for getting into a UN in what form. And we'll have some tactical judgments to make, like do you want the information in digital or print form? And which kind of digital form? We know the answers to that. And whether you want to pay the fees that are offered, whether they want to challenge them and appeal them to the state as unreasonably high. There will be tactical decisions that don't take much time to make, and we have our advice ready.
Okay.
As we've worked for other towns on same kind of thing.
So in your experience, how long would Phase 1A?
Well, that's up to Massport or
Or Hanscom, whatever we decide.
Whether you have to appeal to the state to try to get an order that they shall to compel them to. But probably a month, months.
That's fast.
The agencies come out with the information in dribs and drabs. And in fact, we instruct them not to wait till it's one giant package. But we want the information, the individual documents we identify when they see they possess them. And we demand that they cite the authority for any exemptions they claim to keep them secret. These are all tactical matters. So you're not just waiting for a big FedEx two months from now. However, the main choice for you will be what to do about getting more information than they deign to give you. That'll be a strategic judgment you'll make, whether you, if you will, want to go on to another phase, like appealing their violation to the state.
You have any way of knowing whether anyone else has made similar requests of them?
No, I have no way of knowing. And I do not know.
But if they if there are other such requests pending, their cost to produce any information should
If you ask around or you get an informal alliance or a joint venture or shared costs with others who are have similar interests.
Right.
You might A, piggyback on their requests and help share their costs if any, and thereby get the information better and sooner. Secondly, you might find that the agency has given one set of information to them and different information to you, but that's legally significant. I won't go into it now. If one agency says we don't have that and they told someone else, here it is, you understand their legal implications to that under the these laws. So yes, I recommend you try to at least network others similarly interested.
Right. So we talked about this before, whether all the hats towns should collaborate on this. And also to answer your question, Henry, I believe if one of them had already asked, we they would have brought that up and we would know.
You can make that inquiry now, and before we spend too much time on this or that, tell us if what you find the other towns or other interests are doing.
And whether they would be willing to share the cost.
Well, share the cost and share the information. Then it just means that we make some phone calls.
Okay. I think it makes a certain amount of sense to get the ball rolling and then have that conversation, especially since as soon as we start getting some of these documents, it may give us an idea about whether it's worth it to pursue more of them.
Okay. So I mean, I guess the the question before us now is whether to authorize the town manager enter into this contract for limited legal services with Mr. McGregor's firm.
And then we would get updates. The process would be that the select board would have updates if we wanted to expand it.
Right. As as I understand, Phase 1A, it's the public records request, and then you are going to review what you receive and give us advice on where we might go next.
Yes.
Is that right? And that would happen with this board.
Affordable because it's broken into phases and sub-phase.
Yeah.
Right, they might
We don't notice.
Compress and things get busy quickly depending on the reaction you get to asking for this information, which I stress, you're entitled to.
Right.
But why does it cost money to get it?
The physical cost of copying and producing is reimbursable in law, but it can be waived upon request for this and that reason. And we always ask for a waiver of the cost for municipalities and for unincorporated citizen groups.
So, Mr. McGregor, you say that this first phase would include an advice or strategy session to discuss findings and legal options. What form do you think that takes? Is that something where you would meet with this board in executive session or meet with the town manager or how do you think that works?
Great question. Each client picks a liaison with us.
Okay.
It can be any trusted person who we can rely on and they can rely on us to relay the information. That could be a member of the board. It could be town manager or assistant, could be a town official who is detailed to be the point person on this project. And you just tell us who that is. And we'll have regular small communications with that individual. And then every once in a while, schedule a quick meeting here.
I I think that makes sense because we're a little early in the process for an executive session.
We're ready for a motion? Do you want to comment?
Yes.
Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. My understanding, and I hope you will help me understand this, Mr. McGregor. My understanding is that the the environmental review board can only make a recommendation to Massport, but cannot make it is not a deciding body. Does that color in any way the determination to try to amass this kind of information? It may not.
You're going to address questions through the board, assuming that through the board. MIPA review is only one of the things that the agency has to satisfy. There's a panoply of permits, licenses, approvals, grants, subsidies, federal approvals that this project has to obtain. Massachusetts happens to be one of two dozen states with a environmental review project program to review the impacts of state permits, state projects, and state financial subsidies first. You're correct that the review is of the environmental impacts as analyzed and written by the applicant or consultants for the applicant. And the state agencies review, although it's one of the most professional in the nation, ultimately is to review the adequacy of that analysis. Now, that that's a term of art and has a lot of baggage under the court cases and regulations. You have to be fully comprehensible of all the alternatives, including the no build alternative. And they can't give that short shrift. And they have to cover all kinds of impacts, not just the ones they choose to find whoa. You have to look at the impacts of all the communities and all types of land uses in the community. Can't give short shrift and be overly selective there. Furthermore, the under the law, the consultants have to be qualified and the analysis has to be thorough. And the conclusions have to follow from the facts and the like. It's very law, but it ultimately is not a permit. The Secretary of Environmental Affairs does not have the authority to prohibit the project or disapprove it as having too much environmental impact. So I would not put all my eggs in the MIPA basket. I don't mean don't participate to the hilt in public participation under the law because it's a great public forum. The MIPA unit is completely above board and maintains a perfect record. You'll never be charged a fee to look at any documents that are on file with MIPA. And the court cases do allow parties withstanding to sue to challenge the legal inadequacy of the study. But ultimately, you're correct, that is the limit.
Thank you. Okay. Did we take a vote on this?
Motion?
Yes.
Move to retain McGregor, Legere, and Stevens PC to perform a public records request to Hanscom known as Phase 1A for a fixed fee of $7,500.
Should that be recommend the town manager retain?
Move to recommend. I don't know.
I I we're not retaining the town manager.
Move to what recommends the town manager retain? Do I have to repeat everything else? I think you got the rest of it, didn't you?
I think it's fine. Okay. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Honestly, I think it's a gray area about once you get into it's not gray when you talk about who appoints, but once you get into making decisions about particular matters, it seems to be a gray area, or it's at least it's a gray area in my mind, based on how the town has proceeded in the past. So either motion is fine. I understand the intent of the board.
Great. And we have a second.
You're not you're not paying the bill.
Neither are we. Neither are we. The town is.
Right.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman. Aye.
Thank you.
And do we want to decide who the point person is or we want to do that later?
We don't need to do that now.
Okay.
We don't need to do that as a formal matter, I don't think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
For you already.
Well, and you get out of here early, don't you? Yeah. Okay, it's the next item of business.
The update on
Yes. So we have we have some reports in the materials and is there any discussion on those materials and where are we going to go from here on the rec?
If you could just pause for a moment, both the police chief and fire chief are here for this item, and Shannon just went to let them know that it's up.
Good.
Thank you.
They in the green room?
The refreshments are better back there.
Do we stand up when you enter? Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So we have we have a report that from Terry and we have a report from the town manager and it it looks like this is a relationship that is not prospering and maybe and the primary effect on this is in addition to the town is the two public safety departments. And so can we get your commentary on the status of this at this point?
Do you would you like to? Maybe it would be helpful if Terry could just provide an update of the action
Okay.
of the the Acton Select Board. I think that's what you were waiting for.
Yes.
First.
Okay, well, it's in the packet, but just very quickly. After a very long discussion, I watched the tape and the Acton Board voted unanimously to consider the neutral site and consider adding other towns. And they want to get this done in the next three months or so. They did seem, most of them confused about what our issues are in Concord. They especially didn't understand our concern about the neutral location. So if we continue, we need to do a better job explaining what that is all about. I really think watching the meeting, and I've been to all of the meetings except this one, the relationship between the two communities in this area especially is not too good or improving. The communication is just not there. And if you have poor communication and lack of confidence in each other at this courtship phase, I'm really not sure we should, you know, continue and enter into the whole partnership. And looking at an alternate site and adding other towns, is that really going to solve the problem? If there's misunderstandings and poor communication, instead, you know, we've this is a critical public safety service. So we need to have a very solid foundation, which we don't right now. And I'm just being very blunt about this, unfortunately, needs to be said. That's my opinion after watching it and turn it over to the chiefs because very interested to see what you folks
Could I, before they speak, I would like to say something as well. The this board had very significant discussion a couple of meetings back about the issues that we see with the regional dispatch. They were all detailed very extensively in a memo. And I can appreciate that perhaps the Acton Select Board does not understand the issue with the neutral location. I think they don't agree with with our issue of it not being a neutral location. It's not the neutral location. The concept is not difficult to understand. There are a number of regional dispatch entities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and none of them are in a non-neutral location. None of them are attached to a public safety facility of a member community. So again, this is this is something that I would say is not the issue is not shared by the town of Acton, and why would it be? I I can appreciate, I know Terry's been to a number of the meetings. The communications are very difficult. I have found the meetings extremely difficult. The the tone of the comments being made, and for anybody who watched, has watched any of those meetings, attended those meetings, or either read, saw the Acton meeting or or read the results of that, there are regularly being comments being made that don't sound like comments from a partner, a community partner, as Terry had said. I'm sure from Acton's perspective and the Acton Town Manager's perspective, this is very difficult. He is only one of two people who were involved in this from the get-go on the staff side. So there's been a lot of change, a lot more change with this board probably than the Acton Board. A lot of change on the staff level. So I'm sure it is frustrating. But when we ask for six months and the the response back is three months, that doesn't that sounds that doesn't, that sounds, and and there is a comment in here. Um a Acton Select Board member does not want to be held hostage to Concord. That doesn't sound like somebody we want to partner with for a critical public safety service, and and that is the concern. And um I I do think that maybe one or both of the chiefs might like to add to that. Uh but that, I think that's, it is important. We've been at this for a very long time. We've made very little progress. Um there there were comments in here that that the candidates, the executive director candidates left or pulled out because we weren't moving forward. That is not true. One of, we had two candidates, one of them accepted another position, and the second candidate was not acceptable to the panel. And it just seems like that is, we're trying to blame Concord for not coming along as fast as Acton. And again, we've had a lot of we have a lot of different people involved, and that's just how how these things happen. I was involved in one of these regional dispatch entities in the community I worked with prior to coming here. It took ten years to bring that together. So these these things take time and they're painful, but when I hear comments that I hear regularly at the board meeting and I'm I'm hearing through the town of Acton, that's not making me comfortable and making me want to rally my troops to support this. Okay, I'll get off my soapbox now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That says it all. Is is there any anything further to be said on that subject? Uh my, the question I asked Carrie when we talked about this was whether at this point the our chiefs were on board with making making this decision. And I guess you can speak for yourselves briefly.
Good evening. Tom Mulcahy, I'm the police chief. So um yes, we we are, I am on board um with us making this decision. Um I don't think six months is given a six-month time is unreasonable. So um I support Carrie's decision here. Um I don't think that it's something that we couldn't look at down the road. We couldn't look at other surrounding communities, partnering communities with others, but I think um you know, I support Carrie right now in this. Um and we are, I'm comfortable with uh with this decision right now.
Okay. Tom?
Good evening. Tom Judge, I'm the fire chief. Um like Chief Mulcahy, he just said um it's, you know, it would be, it would be great down the road to be looking um at, you know, another another potential rec situation. I think that six months that was requested for the things that were outlined in in the memo. Um I think six months was reasonable. I think that offering three months in return. Um it almost feels like a message because the things that we talked about are not, it's not possible in three months. Um I've made no, I've made no secret about it that I'm a proponent of the rec. There are there are safety features, I believe, in having all of staff together, but I also understand that if the um if the partnership isn't right, then, you know, it it's probably um probably doomed to failure or um just not being as effective as we we would like it to be. Um one thing that um, one thing I'm going to mention that I that I picked up, when I I listened to the select board meeting last week also in Acton, and one thing I picked up on that I found a little bit alarming um was one of the core things that I hope to achieve from this. Um we often talk about, you know, the dispatchers are available to, you know, to to be at the window to talk to people when they come in, and it's always been that way. It's been that way since dispatch started. Um my, and that's how, that's how we operate now, and we have to operate that way right now, and I understand why. But one of the things that I hope to achieve was that we would get away, get away from that, because I would really like to see um professional nine-one-one dispatchers being able to focus on radio traffic, nine-one-one calls, and making sure that nothing is missed, that there's no radio calls that are missed while they're giving directions at the window, or, you know, some other task that that maybe is not suited to them. What I found alarming the other night was one of the Acton Select Board members pointed out that one of Concord's um one of Concord's uh reluctantly to this at the beginning was that they would lose the people at the window. And now if we move it to a neutral site, now we're going to lose people at the window, so we're going to have to hire more people. Well, I was never aware that there was any plan for Acton, for rec dispatchers in Acton to be handling the public window. I thought that that was already put to bed. So, you know, now we're down to operational stuff that I'm not willing to accept. So I just think there's an awful lot going on here. Um there's a lot more questions to be answered that can be, then can be answered in three months. So I completely support Carrie's request and decision.
Thank you. I think we have a motion on this, don't we? We do. There any further discussion? If not, let's let's get on with it.
Moved that the board, having determined that participation in the Acton Concord Regional Emergency Communications Center is no longer in the best interest of the town, the town manager is directed to take all necessary actions in consultation with town council to terminate the regional nine-one-one emergency communications district agreement with the town of Acton dated as of May twenty seven, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Roll call vote. Ms. Escobedo.
Um could I just ask a question first, please? Um I understand that there will be some, uh obviously uh cost involved for the legal aspect of this. Uh could I just have some clarification about what the cost is for monies that have already been distribu- uh uh obtained by the rec? If we know that.
Sure. So a hundred percent of what has been expended on this venture has been grant funded through the state. It's about seventy thousand dollars of the total commitment, and that's that's been for feasibility. I did see there was a a note made that an Acton Select Board member said if any of that needed to be paid back, that the town of Concord should be responsible for that. I would say it would be highly unli- likely that the state would be looking for the town of Concord or both towns to repay a grant when both were moving forward in good faith to conduct a feasibility study and stand up the uh, you know, for the purposes for which the grant funding was um was provided. So I I would be surprised if if that is a cost. The regional agreement says that any member community that wants to leave the agreement must provide three years notice. Um that is really geared toward when a, when the um the district is stood up and it's functioning, so we're not really sure at this point in time um what if any liability there would be to the town. And this has been a a little bit of a an issue because our town council has a conflict because our town council op- also represents the town of Acton, so we have only had very preliminary discussions about this, but I would expect that the any liability to the town would be very small.
Just think of all the money the state has saved on our not going forward.
Well, I I I would, again, I would be surprised if they were looking for either community to repay any of those grant funds.
And and just one quick follow-up question. Thank you for that. Um does this mean we're also going to have to seek uh other council on this issue?
Um I town council, I had a conversation with town council last week, and he said he would think about that. And um I will reach back out to him later this week to to talk about that. He wasn't completely sure, um but that is a that is a potential possibility.
Okay.
Do we have your vote, Linda?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman. Aye.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for your uh attendance. Very much appreciated. Keep up the good work. Okay, next is the um.
Residential tax exemption.
Uh the residential tax exemption. Okay. Okay. So um.
You're.
Where to start on this?
Okay.
Um the uh the impetus for the residential tax exemption was a means to um 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 moderate the the impact on the owners of lower value homes of uh tax increases resulting from primarily from uh capital expenditures of the town, uh which um have a um um which would in- incur uh substantial uh ca- um increases of taxes of approximately twelve hundred dollars a year on the median home. Um and that um the um the combination of tax increases on lower value homes and the increasing values is a substantial uh impetus for um long-term residents of the town to sell their property and to move from Concord that would have stayed if they merely had homes that had a higher value, if their costs of living there were not so high. And so it's um the impact of these expenditures and these tax burdens imposed on um uh residents in the ho- homes of lesser value um is conflicts with our objectives to both preserve the the culture of this town and to preserve our lower value housing stock, which is sold, is likely to be developed into larger homes. And um uh we we refer to as mansionization, and also um the um i- in many ways, the best way to provide affordable housing is to do what we can to keep the housing we have affordable. And so there, we have very few options. Um we have very few options to achieve that end. Um w- without substantially um reducing the um the town's budget, um which is not a realistic expectation. And so the the option that is available to us is the statutory residential tax exemption, which allows the 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 select board by a majority vote to um to designate a percentage of a percentage of the um the value of the median home um as exempt from taxation, uh which means in uh and if we pick the right number, it means that we can um pretty much wipe out the effect of our current debt structure on the lower value homes, so that uh we have one table that we we had, was produced by the Board of Assessors for a ten percent residential exemption within earlier report. I think we have an update on that, which I have not yet seen, but if you look at that, you can see that the reduction in the lower value homes is uh very similar, is very similar to the tax increase that they would uh be subject to uh based on the tax increases from these um, the debt service that we're referring to. It does not affect the town, the town's levy or revenue because the uh to compensate for the portion of every residence that is exempted, and it's not just the lower value ones, the ten percent is taken off the bottom of every residential property uh which is occupied by the owner. Um and so that takes uh that takes a a certain amount out of the total revenue from the town, which is then compensated for by raising the tax rate on the remaining value of all those homes. But the net effect is, as you see in these tables, that you get a tax reduction, a significant tax reduction on residential on on the lower value residential homes. Uh there's a lot of um discussion about this in terms of whether this is a, whether the existing um real estate tax system is a regressive tax, which in many ways it is, but it is um and we've got some other authority which um uh which you just was sent to me earlier today about how um there's a tendency that has been uh observed that higher value properties tends to be under as, under assessed, and lower value properties tend to be over assessed, and therefore um relying on a real estate, real estate taxes for revenues is uh regressive in two regards. One is that um it is a tax that is not based on uh, not based on income or ability to pay, but also there's a tendency for people of lower uh of lower income to be taxed at a higher rate. Um so we have really no other uh, no other option in order to equalize our tax um, our tax system uh and to um to protect um our lower, the the owners of lower value homes. When I say lower value homes, I'm not talking about um bungalows. I'm talking about um properties under the median, uh under the median um value, which is something oh in excess of a million dollars. Um and if you look at the numbers, the tax rate, the increase in the tax rate on the remaining uh value of all those properties does not go up by that much. The this, these um, these numbers which did not take into account the fiscal twenty-four budget or the debt service on the middle school showed that the um that at a ten percent residential exemption, the uh, the estimated new residential rate would be thirteen seventy-four, which is about an increase of about a dollar a thousand. Um which is not on, which is not uh which, which is not an unbearable burden to to bear. This is the uh, I think.
You might want to mention that where, at what point does it become?
Yeah, that is the breakpoint, the break, what they call the breakpoint in that um in 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 with at a ten percent exemption based on last, the last fiscal year was actually um, there was zero, zero change in the tax bill of a home valued at uh two point, two, two point one, two million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um and so that is um we're not talking about um um really low value property. We're talking about adjusting the impact of the tax, the taxes on um people in a more equitable way and preserving um the uh, preserving uh the um the longevity of long-term and older uh town residents. Um there is um some issues about the the implementation of the, of of the implementation of this uh system. It is one that has been adopted by about a dozen other towns successfully uh without uh any serious problems that we're aware of. Um and um what we're proposing as a vote on this is that the um ten percent exemption be adopted and that the implementation be worked out between the town manager and the board uh, the board chair and the assessors in order to find the most efficient way to implement the uh this um exemption. It is hoped that this can be done by using existing public records, but if not, there's a very simple application form. But if not, there's a very simple application form, which the Department of Revenue uses for appeals from denial of exemptions, which could be adapted for the purpose and we assume would be satisfactory to the Department of Revenue. So this is open to discussion by the board?
Yeah.
Good. Well, Henry, you mentioned there's an update to this.
I believe that that's sitting on the chair over there, but we haven't seen it yet.
Okay. And I guess that ties in, you said that these numbers don't include the debt service.
Well, they only include the part of it that was in the fiscal year 2023.
Right. Does the update include the, all right, great.
So that. How much of the debt service does that include? All of it or the the next 52 million or how much?
Yeah. Yeah. The next 52 million.
Fifty, so this was the 12, so this included the 12 million. That includes 52 million more and then there's going to be another tranche, right?
Right.
Of about 40 something million.
Right, which will be offset by the the stabilization fund.
All of it?
Not all of it, some of them.
Okay, thank you.
Once we implemented something like this, it would be in place, presumably going on into the future and would have a similar impact on all future budgeting years.
That's correct.
No, every, every year we could, the select board has a chance to change it, like we could, I think, try this for one or two years. Three years, all right. And then they could, we could try it for three years and then that future select board you'll still be.
We could also adjust the percentage.
Yeah, but my, my point being, once, once these impacts, let's say we implemented and we decided not to change it, then in subsequent years, the whatever the change in the, in the tax rate was would simply again start to occur. It's sort of a one-time adjustment that that does have some of the benefits you outlined, but then after that, it's going to be in effect for all future years and.
But that is not a bad effect to have is to have more, a more equitable taxing structure going forward where people who have lower value homes pay lower real estate taxes. It's, it's, it's a kind of a backhanded way to have a graduated real estate tax.
Yes, and what I, what I'm sort of pointing out is we could think about it as, yes, we're taking, you know, if your home happens to be, you know, $810,000 under the 2023, you'd see a reduction of $1,000, which is roughly the amount of the middle school expenses for for that in that year, but there's not a way to take off another $1,000 next year because that's just it's, once it, once it happens, it's, it's.
It goes down forever.
Right, it would go down forever, but I mean, if we go out and borrow another $50 million, it doesn't take, doesn't do anything for that.
But we could increase the exemption percentage up to, up to 35%, which would be the maximum permitted, but it seemed like the 10% was made sense right now.
Interesting place to start.
Not necessarily married to that percentage. We could either raise it or lower it as appropriate.
Yeah.
And I don't think we're going to be borrowing another 50 million in the next few years.
Well, we are, we're going to borrow another.
No, besides the.
We are going to borrow more.
Right.
That's in eight or 10 years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm just pointing out that it's not, there's a relatively limited runway for implementing offsets to capital and then after that it's baked in and it's going to become the norm.
But it is, it is something that can be implemented with relative ease and is the, is the only, is the only way that we have to deal with this issue.
Yeah, and it's a tool for addressing the regressivity that's in the system now. And that's, that's got value.
And so it's something that really makes, makes a lot of sense for us to do. And it's something that we've been really kind of has been bubbling up for the last two or three years as we have been facing the potential tax increases from our arising from a debt service of, you know, in excess of $5 million a year.
And I feel like it would be good just, just for those people that are trying to understand when we're saying 10%. What we're saying is we're creating an exemption that is equal to 10% of the median assess, of the average assessed value of the residential properties today. So that 10% number is the same number for everybody. It's a specific number in the example that was on the screen a few minutes ago. It's $123,000 of the assessed value would simply be removed from all of those owner occupied properties.
It's a slice taken right off the bottom.
Yeah.
Of equal size taken off a body.
For all qualifying residents.
Right.
Yes. I just, I, I think that it's important for us to say that. My, my question here is, aren't we required to have a, some sort of public hearing on this before we actually?
There is no, there is no requirement.
Right, the classification hearing is a public hearing, we have that in November.
So we, you're right, we don't, we don't vote until November on the tax rate. So that would be an opportunity for people who have questions or comments have until November to get them to us and we would have that hearing at that time.
Oh, that's a hearing we would have anyway.
Yes.
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 That is not a special hearing necessary to adopt this. The statute is very clear. All that's required, and we have a copy of the statute in the materials, is that this be voted by a majority of the select board and then it apply to class one residential property owner occupied by a person who uses that address for their Massachusetts income tax return, period. Now, how we determine those who are eligible is a matter that we need to explore because we'd like to do it in a way that is least burdensome to the to the assessor and the Board of Assessors. And we'd also like to make it most, we'd like to get maximum participation. Because that's the way that if it's something that's difficult for people to become qualified for, we will not include probably many of the people who really should be included. And that is one of the advantages of, of having a simplified process for qualification so that, because our goal, unlike some other communities that have the residential exception, our goal is to include as many eligible people as possible. And if we do that, if we, if we have, if we can include almost all of the eligible people to start with, it makes it a lot easier for this assessors to set the tax rate because they know what the, what revenues will be deleted by people claiming the exemption.
I noticed Linda has a comment. Linda has.
Oh, hi Linda.
Yeah, thank you. A, a couple of questions and comments. One is that do we have, each of the communities that are already doing this across the state are so different. The circumstances are so different from where we are on, on this issue. But I still have the question, do we have some idea of what percentage of individuals above the exemption application apply for abatements? Do, do we have any idea from the other communities what that looks like? So that's one question. Another comment I would make is that, and a question, my understanding is that commercial properties, i.e. apartments, are not eligible for this exemption. We have many lower income people in our apartments and when we discussed, we, we've, as my colleagues know on the select board, we've discussed this issue over a period of a couple of years, each time learning more about it, which is good. But when we last discussed this about a year ago, or one of the times we discussed it about a year ago, there were about 900 individuals in apartments, at least that was the estimate that was given to us at that time. And I'm concerned that there's a significant portion of those individuals who are also going to be hurt when the tax increase is passed along from the landlords to those individuals. 900 people is not something we should ignore. So that, that's another point and I, I know that there is some talk about additional funds that might be in a rental assistance or some kind of program, but I, I think we need to have further discussion on, on that aspect of it. And then the other well, I think that's the main thing right now I'll, I'll start with. Thank you.
So the, we've talked about the impact on rental property in the past and whether or not it would lead to rent increases is a matter, I think that we treat it as pure speculation because rents for residential property are not determined by the landlord's expenses. Residential rental, rental agreements do not have tax escalator clauses in them the way some commercial leases do. And how much rent is charged by your typical landlord is based on what the market is for rental property of that location and quality and does not necessarily relate to the, what the costs of the, of the landlord are. All, and all of those course costs for the landlord are of course tax deductible to the landlord, unlike a residential, a residential homeowner that can only deduct from their tax return a limited portion of their real estate taxes. So it's, it's, it, it has been mentioned a number of times. We believe that it is largely speculation, but it is also, it is also something that is a fact, I think that we have, we, we, we've dealt with.
Oh, sorry.
Can I, Mary? Can I make a remark? Actually, I think that whether this harms renters is, is an open question and we don't, we don't know really. We can put forward economic theories going one way or the other and they both might be, one of them might be right. But I will say that I was in touch with one of the select board members from the town of Williamstown, which is considering a residential tax exemption in Williamstown and she told me that both Province Town and Wellfleet are putting together home rule petitions to allow renters to somehow qualify for the residential tax exemption. Now, I don't have the particulars of that, but I know that there are other towns that have adopted the residential tax exemption and that are looking for ways to do, to do that. So that's something we might look into if we find that, yes, this is somehow harmful to, to renters. I would just make another comment that I realize that this is not a, a perfect tool, but if we're serious about having broad participation in exemptions, this is what we have available to us. The senior means tax exemption has very, very minimal participation for a number of reasons. The, the income limits are so low, the application process I think is onerous. This is, this is an exemption that can be done relatively straightforwardly. And if we're serious about helping with diversity of housing and diversity of incomes, this is the best thing we have available to us right now.
No, your comments notwithstanding, Mary, I, I very much appreciate them. I would just, I think it's also important for us to know that I believe it's the town is expected to come forward to the housing trust with a request for rental assistance because they, they already have a, a known need that they're unable to meet and particularly for people who don't meet the senior means tested and some other avenues of, of regress. So I, you know, I, I, I don't disagree with, we need to look at the large picture and, you know, tools are imperfect here, but I don't want us to lose sight of other pieces of this.
Yeah, I agree that it sounds like a really good thing we could try to balance things out and stop the bleeding, I guess, of, of people who are really on the edge and, and feeling they have to leave. I guess I would like to hear from the town manager or the assessors or anybody. Are there any other downsides that we haven't talked about yet? Is there more work in the assessors office? Do we have to hire more staff? Are there other, are there any other reasons not to do this?
Give it a shot. All right, well, first of all, we haven't actually looked at the, at the latest numbers, which are not quite exactly what were presented in the, in the packet you got earlier. The $2 million break even point is, was on the assumption that we give 50%, that 50% of residents get the exemption, which is in my opinion, a very low number. I mean, and that's not what we should be aiming for. And, and it's certainly not, I don't think it's even safe to assume that. We, we don't want to, so we want to be looking at 90%, which is what the select board asked for earlier. And the numbers, the break even point for the residential exemption exists to about one and a half million with, with that participation, yes. It's, which is still, I would point out considerably above the median house value. So you will see, this, this will benefit the medium, median homeowner and anybody below.
What's the median value?
Median value at, right now is 1.1,169,900, is it? Yeah. Yeah, I've looked at that number long enough that I can almost add a little bit off. So that's, that's, so the median house will get, will get, no matter which way we cut this, median house will get some benefit.
Just because I like to use simple language for people who may, the median house, when we're talking about the median house, it means half the houses are below that.
Yeah.
And the other half are above it. So if we're well above the median, it means that the actual beneficiaries of this would include more than half the homes in, in Concord would qualify for a reduction.
I think roughly one third of, of everyone would, would have a significant benefit. One third would have a slight benefit, one third would pay more.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. My earlier question about do, do we have any indication of what kind, what percentage of abatements get asked for by the people on the higher end who are affected by this from the other towns? And I realize it's so different from town to town.
I don't have, I don't think we have hard statistics. It, it's been, I used to keep statistics back when I was, in my, my previous terms on the select board, but I haven't been keeping them this year. But we did see quite a number of, of abatement requests for houses in the $2 million range, give or take. So we didn't have a very busy, and that was not, in a not very busy abatement season this year, I, I was, we were, we were very.
Why are we talking?
We were very happy that.
Why are we talking, I guess, Linda, why, why, why are you interested in abatements relative to the, I don't see the link?
Oh, I, I, I think I can.
I don't, I think she's asking a different question.
I, I.
What do you think she's asking?
Maybe that, that if, that, that, that these are the people who are going to get the increases and they are going to try to, they, they may be encouraged to try to offset their tax increase by getting another abatement.
So is that lowering their assessed value?
Yes.
Asking for a.
They'll try to lower their assessed value.
So this will trigger, so the fact that they're.
I think that's the.
Is that, is that the theory, Lynn? Lynn, is that?
I'm trying to get some sense of the pushback that some of the communities have been dealing with and what we might expect above what we have now. Yeah.
Right, so does that mean that your overlay request would be significantly higher?
Well, the overlay request is going to have to be higher regardless of, oh, actually, that's a good, that is actually a good point. I don't think we'd be granting a lot more abatements because of this, because the house values are what they are.
Right.
It, it would just be. It would just be, this year, we, I think, granted a, again, I used to keep percentages, we, in the past, when I kept percentages, we, we gave significant abatements to about half the people who came before us. And either no abatement or a less than really substantial abatement. I mean, some people just got a few dollars. But, but we, my recollection, my, my general sense of it is in the, in past years that, that, you know, you have about a fifty fifty chance of getting a significant payment. If we have a larger crowd of people coming in, the quality of the applications is probably going to be lower and probably going to have a lower yield on.
Right. But my question is, how much do you put aside for the overlay now? And how much would you have to put aside if we voted a ten percent?
I think, I think what's going to really affect the overlay is, is the exemptions themselves. Basically, if you put in a 10% exemption, you're essentially writing a check for, was it nine and a half million dollars roughly on the, on the town's finances, which has to be, has to be paid back. Now, if we can get people.
Wait, I don't understand that. Explain that.
Oh, because, 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 because you're, because that's, that's the amount of, that's the total amount of exemptions that we expect we might be able to granting.
But why doesn't that?
By the higher tax rate.
Well, we hopes, yes, we hope, yes, that's, that's the idea. But the higher tax rate is going to go to fund the, well, would go to fund the, if, if, if we, okay, there's two scenarios here. One, if we could, if we could, by some miracle, qualify all qualified applicants before we set the tax rate.
That's what we'd like to do, by the way.
We would love to do that. That would be.
And I think, I think we, I think we possibly can.
Yes, that, that, yeah, well, and, and that is, and that is actually something that we can see as we go along, and we can, we can see as we get, you know, I, I, I would recommend, I had a few recommendations for how to try this. But, but yes, that is, that is, that is the goal. That is, that is, that is.
And if you, if you hit that goal, then the tax rate you set, that we set in November would in fact cover all of the exemptions.
We would be, we would be, we would be giving to the DOR a value that was our value minus the abatements that we know about, which would be
Right.
substantial, something like, well, the numbers are on the sheet there, which I don't have in front of me. But, but yes, we would, we would, we would be giving those numbers and I, I, well, I, I have not been through this myself, but I believe, I, I think they would, they would then allow us to set the tax rate as we needed to in order to, in order to grant these exemptions and maintain our.
Okay, in that scenario.
We would, we would be telling them, look, this is what, this is the amount of value we're taxing. And this is, this is the tax rate we're thing, we're going to raise this much money. It's, you know.
A wash.
Yeah, and it's, and we're only proposing to raise the amount that we, that we have in the town budget.
Exactly.
And not to bust the levy limit.
Right, right. So can we back up a minute? Can you explain what you were saying about nine and a half million dollars?
Yes. So if we, that's, that's scenario number two. If we, if we, if we were to, and by the way, one really good piece of news that we got since, since giving you that packet was, was that we can actually send out the applications before January 1st, which I was very happy to learn is a thing that is done and it was recommended.
That's good.
So, so that is, that.
So what that means then is that you might not need as much in the overlay to cover late, late.
Right. Everyone, everyone who puts in a timely application, and timely being before you have to set the tax rate is, is that many thousand dollars less that need to be, that, that, that need to be basically.
Can I, can I summarize?
Confused.
Can I, let me try, let me try to summarize.
Go to this, I don't understand.
Let me, can I try to summarize? Can I try to summarize this? Okay. If we knew exactly how many people were eligible for this, right? By the time we set the tax rate, we would set the tax rate so that we covered all of the exemptions and we would be, everything would be happy. But we don't. We don't, we don't think we're, we're going to know that. So we're going to have to set a rate that's a little bit lower than we need to absorb them all, and we're going to take some of that out of the overlay account. For these are people who came in after we set the rate. Am I kind of close?
It's close.
Okay. You have to increase the overlay to cover the people that you didn't know about or didn't estimate when you set the rate, right? And that's where we're end up with a problem a little bit about we need to boost the overlay, right? And right now, the overlay, I think, is at 2.7 million. And every year, we, we give another half a million out of the general fund, right? So I guess I'm wondering, how much more do we need to cover?
Right.
If, if we know the, if we know the applications are coming in earlier, which was good news, and if we're able to set our rate high enough to absorb most of this, right? Then what do we, do you have a good feel now for what you would need in the overlay over the 3.2 million that you're going to have to cover the abatements that you're expecting and late applications?
Yeah. So, so here's, here's scenario number two, if I could. The scenario number two is a kind of a worst case situation. We send out our applications and nobody sends them in. Everybody says, oh, I'll, well, I will, I will send mine in for one. But, but let's, let's, let's suppose that, you know.
You will?
Almost. Oh, I certainly will. My wife, my, well, or my, or my wife will. She will, she will not let that pass.
Okay.
But, but the, but the, but I, I, as we're hoping everybody will, but, but let's, let's say that ninety percent of the people who are eligible, just, 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 just let it slide. And they just say, well, I can, I can file in December, I can file in January. And, and, and so we end up in, at the, at the, at the rate setting hearing. And we have gotten, you know, a couple hundred applications and which we have, which we have been able to approve. Then, then that's, that's when that 9.6 million dollars is basically this blank check. Well, not blank check, it's, 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 we, we, we have, we have a potential liability. If we, if we set that, if we set a 10%, if we then, without having, having actually gotten exemptions in hand and been able to reduce our, our tax base by that amount. We still got a tax base, which is nearly what it is right now. But we're looking at giving back 9.6 million dollars of
Let's cross that bridge.
After January 1st.
Let's cross that bridge.
That's what, that's what we have to give back, and I'm not sure.
Good point. Let's cross that bridge when we get to.
You two are having a great dialogue, but I don't think that.
Something else understand it.
You're not covering.
No, I think you need to start at the very beginning.
Let me try it.
Really.
The, the risk here is that we do not guess correctly how many people who qualify for the exemption actually step up and ask for it.
Right.
And if you get that, yeah, if you, if you.
I get that.
And what, what Mr. Carr is saying is if you guess too low, in other words, you assume that you're going to get a bunch of applications in for the exemption that don't arrive, you're going to set the tax rate at a level which under recovers. And if you set it in the opposite direction, you can set the tax rate at a rate that over recovers.
So you can, we can deal with this, number one, by promoting it.
Yeah.
By publicizing it, by including applications in the tax bills, by, by pointing out to people that everybody is entitled to the, the whatever that 10% is times the current tax rate. So then even if you live in a $5 million home, you still save money by filing because your tax rate is going to go up anyway. So you save the $14, $14 per thousand on the first, whatever it is, 10% of the median. So everybody saves. And I still want to explore the option of using public records to qualify people because the only two requirements of the statute are that they use a Massachusetts tax, that they use the address from their Massachusetts tax return and that they are a resident. Now, if we could get the, if we can get the information from the Department of Revenue as to the people who have filed Massachusetts tax returns using a Concord address. And we run that against illicit persons, which is a legal list of people who are entitled to vote in the town because they are residents. You're going to hit 95% of the people who are eligible by doing almost no work.
So I would just caution that that approach is not the advice that we are, or the direction that we are receiving from the Department of Revenue. It would be, we'll continue to pursue that with the Department of Revenue. But unfortunately, like most things in government, it's probably not going to be that easy.
So what, what are the advising that we need to do?
That, that it requires an application like any other.
Physical application.
I, I did want to just follow up, just Mark, you did a nice job explaining, but I just wanted to make sure, Terry, that you understand it's, it's the underestimation that hits the overlay. So if we underestimate the property tax and we're giving the property tax rate based on who we think will qualify and we have more people that apply, then we're paying that difference out of the overlay. I don't think I explained that particularly well, but that's.
But I don't, I'm still, and I don't want to take up any more time here. Somebody could explain to me privately. I get that concept, but I have no idea how that comes out to $9 million.
So the, the nine, the $9 million, if, as I understand it, is the value of the 10% shift at 90%.
I think, I actually, we're actually to pass around the.
Yeah, that was good.
They have, and if I could have a copy too.
So if you, basically, if you, if you.
Like no one applies.
Assume that everybody was going to apply and nobody did.
Yeah.
Then.
And then they all applied late.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a, it's a late applicant.
Okay, I think maybe if someone just said that in the beginning.
Yeah, and so it can be up to an improvement.
Okay, thank you.
Nine, so, $9.3 million.
We've already seen this.
No, this is dated, this is dated. So I assume it's updated. So are we ready to go forward with it?
We are. I'm ready. Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
We are.
Want to see this, or is this just going to?
We don't want to be confused.
I do.
We don't want to be confused with.
You're not ready to vote?
No, it's just really thick paper. No, I want to look at this. Oh, we have this.
Oh, my God. What is this?
All right, here's another one. Wait a minute, and then.
What is this? What, what is this?
Yeah, okay. I don't understand this.
This is making it more complicated.
This is the same thing we already have.
Yes.
This is the same thing we already have.
It's, it's, it, it's very similar. It's a little bit more accurate than the, than the 50% figure.
Okay, so wait a second, wait a second. Is this the 50% again?
I think that, yes, that one is, that one is 50%.
All right, so this is the one we want to look at?
Yes, this is 90%, and it also includes the middle school. It also includes the middle school bump, the CMS tax impact.
All of it?
It includes, it's, it's.
It's been issued.
It's the fiscal year 24 CMS.
Okay, so which column of this should we look at to see what will be the impact?
What are we looking at here?
So the column.
Can you ask them to be polite?
So the column, okay, so if you look into qualifying properties.
Excuse me, can you, can you guys?
Okay, the yellow, the yellow.
Yes, if you look in the yellow, in the yellow block on the right.
Got it.
The first column in the yellow, it will be your tax bill if, if the 10% exemption goes through.
Got it.
And you qualify.
10%, okay.
Yes, that's a, that's a 10% exemption for qualified property. Now, the, the left column, the blue block is, is if you don't qualify. The, okay, so you've got, and the second column is the change, is the change, is the difference that the exemption is making for you. Okay, so it's, so it's what you.
In the yellow.
It's, it's, yes, it's a difference between the blue tax bill and the yellow tax bill. And you get, and you get the second yellow column, which is, which is the difference between those two. That's how much, that's basically what, what the exemption was worth to you.
Okay, so can we just walk through, like, for example, this property that looks about break even.
Yes.
About 1,182, that looks like it might be a break even, I'm not sure. It says you're changing the tax bill is 356 if you have the 10% exemption.
That's right.
But your bill is up 305 from last year.
That's what we're estimating for somebody whose home value was, or property value was 1.2 million today.
Right, so the change from FY23 is up 2%. So, so is this person paying more or less?
Explain those last two columns. Those, those are the year to year numbers. The last two columns and the other thing are because those are the columns that take into account the net effect of both the CMS bump and the tax exemption. As you can see, if your, the first four lines actually do have decreases. And that's up to 1.1, that's up to $1 million of, of value in, in fiscal year 23 values.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this?
No, no, I'm not ready to.
Are we gonna?
This is the first time we're looking at this.
We don't want to go through every number.
No, I don't need to go.
It's a policy decision. Do we agree with the policy or don't we agree with the policy? And yes, there's going to be a break even point, and some people are going to pay slightly more, and some people are going to pay slightly less.
Break even point here is about 1.1 million, is that right?
I, yeah, I would.
It's 1.5, I think.
Point for the residential exemption is still, it's, it's, it's what you see in the second.
There's so many, there's so many assumptions in here that it's hard.
Yeah.
I'm reading this as 1.5, you save 100.
1.1.
I see.
1.5, you save 100.
Forget the last two columns.
Exactly.
Yes, the last, the last. That's what you're going to see. Yeah, the last two, so it's simply there because this is what people are going, are actually going to notice when they get their tax. Not going to see the first two columns, they're, they're not going to see the second column, they're going, they're just going to see, they're not going to, yeah, they're not going to really be looking at the, at the, at the tax bills of the people who didn't get the exemption. They're going to look at their tax bill, they're going to compare it to last year's tax bill.
And to be.
And we will, and we will see that some people will actually, they will see their year to year tax bill go down.
So.
And others will see that go up.
Okay.
The, the very first column, tax rate adjusted property value is what we would recognize today as the assessment. The, the other one that is valued with exception, exemption is after the 137,947 is subtracted from that first column. So the way to read this chart is to think about where the particular property lands and its assessed value as we think about it today, and then go all the way over and see.
Looking at the bottom column.
So the place where the benefit changes to a cost is between the lines.
Right.
Where the assessment is 1.54 and 1.76.
Exactly.
So somewhere in there is the zero point.
Okay, so before, the residential exemption amount was 123,000. Now it's 137.
Yes, because we're assuming, because we're assuming these, these, the numbers on the, on the right hand of the, of the sheet are all assuming it, you know, tax, you know, values go up.
Later year.
Values, values, values go up every year, so generally, so we're assuming a 10% increase in values, which we think is about what we should expect.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was that this first one didn't have the debt in it.
It has got, it's, there's a whole bunch of things that are not on the first one. It doesn't have the debt, it doesn't have any. Now, I, I should mention, we ran the numbers assuming a 0% increase in values. The, those last three columns came out the same.
Good.
Okay, so, which, which just goes to show that, that, you know, as the values go up, the tax rate goes down to compensate. And everything works out.
All right.
Equal.
Yeah. You ready?
Okay, so if we're voting now, we still need to hear, have a hearing in November, right?
No, we just have to set the tax rate the way we normally would.
But you will, at the, at the tax classification hearing, you will be asked to vote the. But you will, at the, at the tax classification hearing, you will be asked to vote the residential exemption. You are asked a series of questions, one of which is residential exemption.
Which, which the select board does every year.
Right, so what, so if we vote tonight, is that an advisory vote for the assessors and the real vote is November, or, or what are we talking about?
May I make a recommendation? I, I, I would, I would like, if we're going to do this, I, I would like to get out the word as soon as possible, I think, to, to, to everyone. And I would, I would actually like us to immediately, not to wait for the, for the third quarter tax bills, immediately send out a letter to every household, detailed instructions, here's how, here's the application form, here's how you apply, make it as easy as possible.
Right.
You know, you know, don't, don't, don't make them guess about how they're going to do it, you know, if they need to put this form in and say, this is what it's going to look like, this is where you're going to blank it out, so you don't give perfect information, you know.
Yeah, like include the form in the mailing.
Yeah, show, yeah, show, give them a sample. This is what a typical application would look at, just make yours look like this.
I think the, we are adopting, we are voting to adopt the option under the statute to implement the residential exemption at the rate of ten percent. That's what we're voting on.
And this helps the assessors get things moving.
Yes.
Yes, what I. What I, yes, I'd like, what I'd like to see, yes, what I'd like, the select board to do is to direct the town to, to do these, to take these steps, to, to, to make the mailing, to spend the money to make the mailing, to hire the consultant we're going to need to, to, to deal with the.
That's what the vote, the vote, the vote will specify that we will work with the assessors to implement this decision, and that's.
Yeah, and there, and, and I would, I would caution that if we don't, if we don't get a good response back from people, we, we may, we may find ourselves in a little box with a DOR, where, where we're going to have trouble setting the tax rate at what we want to set it.
We're going to send people door to door, okay?
Good.
Good.
Do we have a cost estimate for this consultant? Is it a one person for six months? Is it, you know?
I thought we already had a.
I, I, I think, I think a minimum of twenty-five thousand is that. Yeah.
Okay.
Plus the mailings, and we need, we definitely, and, yeah.
Do we have some place to pay for that, Terry, in this budget?
Okay. We will find a way.
Yeah, so I knew you would. Okay, we ready for the? We ready? You ready?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a one more comment. So I did the math, one hundred and thirty-seven, nine forty-seven, which is the residential exemption amount, times the tax rate of thirteen forty-one per thousand is a tax bill reduction of eighteen hundred forty-nine dollars per property. So the message should be, if you're not interested, if you are interested in giving the town eighteen hundred and forty-nine dollars that you don't have to, don't file the application.
Thank you, Mr. Howell, that is, that is.
That's right, isn't it? That is.
Now let's vote.
Okay. Okay, move. In accordance with provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five C, the Select Board hereby votes to exercise its option under the statute to provide that there shall be an exemption equal to ten percent of the average assessed value of all Class One residential parcels within the town for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and succeeding fiscal years. Provided, however, that such exemption shall be applied only to the principal residence of a taxpayer as used by the taxpayer for income tax purposes, and that the details of implementing the foregoing and establishing eligibility for such exemption shall be determined by the Chair of the Board of Assessors, or the Chair, you mean Board of Assessors, and the Town Manager in consultation with the Town Assessor.
That's a good question. Chair of which Board?
I think you mean Chair of the Select Board.
Yes.
And the Town Manager in consultation with the Town Assessor.
Okay. Second.
Ms. Escobedo.
I'm sorry, I, I have a question before I can move on. I'm confused about the terminology in the motion that says for successive years when we talked about tax rate being set by the Select Board on an annual basis, so I'm confused there.
And I heard Meredith say it's three years.
Three years to revoke you, you could change the percentage each year, but you, you have to keep them for three years before you revoke it.
Linda, can you hear that? No, I couldn't.
Okay, yeah, let me repeat. It, it's, we have to, we, once we start it, we have to continue it for at least three years. But we can change, the, the, the Select Board can vote in a different percentage each subsequent year, so that if you do ten percent this year, it could be higher or lower the second year.
So it could be zero.
I don't know if you can do zero.
But you are.
But you can, but you can certainly, you could, if you don't, if you didn't like it, you could make, you could lower it.
Okay. Mary.
Are you, are you ready?
Yes, wait, Linda, what?
I don't want you to read the whole motion again, but if you could just read the phrase that sort of preceded the terminology successive years.
Yep, it says, "The average assessed value of all Class One residential parcels within the town for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and succeeding fiscal years." So should we change that to the succeeding three fiscal years?
Two.
Would that?
Two years.
Well, she said it had to be.
Right, this year and two succeeding years.
What my thought is that if we said in succeeding fiscal years, that would not prevent us from terminating it by a subsequent vote, regardless of what this motion said, and that it would, phrasing it the way I did, it would meant that it would continue until, until we discontinued it.
And it doesn't prevent us from discontinuing it.
No, it doesn't prevent us from continuing it, but it doesn't mean that we have to renew it every year.
Yeah, it would be better not to have it expire in case we somehow.
If we fall asleep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's. Well, since we can vote to terminate it whenever we were permitted to do so, I don't think that is, is, there's any harm in saying we, it, it will continue to subsequent years.
I don't think there's any fear that you'll fall asleep over this, because you do have to vote it at the classification hearing every year, so.
So, okay. So Linda, are you okay with that?
Um, I, I hear Henry's explanation. I guess my only concern is setting expectations that we then have to roll back by not voting it a particular year, rather than specifying two successive years.
But we, I think, Linda, the vote is yes or no.
Did, did everyone understand what I was trying to communicate?
No, no, I don't, I'm sorry.
I think that the information that we're getting from the assessor is that once this is voted in, it cannot be voted out again in less than three years. And then each year at the tax rate hearing, the level of exemption is established at that hearing along with the regular tax rate. Does that clarify it?
And that's in accordance with the Mass General Law, which is what we're citing at the beginning of this motion.
Right.
So I think, Linda, we're constrained by the Mass General Law, Fifty-Nine, Section Five C, which we talk about at the very beginning. But.
All right.
It's up to you.
You could just say fiscal year twenty-twenty-four then. You don't, I mean, the law specifies the rest of what we have to do anyway.
How do you want to proceed?
Everyone like us to vote on the.
So I think there's a, yeah.
There's a motion in front of us. And we have a second. So Linda, is you, are you ready to vote?
Uh, I guess I'm ready to vote, thank you.
And what, and your vote is?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane? And myself, Ms. Hartman, aye.
Don't let us down now.
Changing your mind.
You changed, yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, David.
I would just request that when we send out the public notices, let's try to be very, make it, yeah, make it as easy to understand as possible.
Yes, I, I thought Mark's.
Yeah.
This application is worth eighteen hundred forty.
Yes, do it.
Absolutely has to be.
That's great, but don't, I, I. I think simplicity is the key.
Yeah.
Because, I, I, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. This is, this is, I think this is incred- incredible step forward.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, okay, so we still have some business to conduct tonight. What do we, we have the evaluation of the Town Manager, is that the next item?
Yeah.
Okay. Evaluation, so. We have, this is a part of our job to evaluation, evaluate the performance of the Town Manager. And this is, I, I found that, that's a responsibility of pleasure. We said, we, we sent out the evaluation forms, we got back many positive responses. The, the check, that the, we have the form with the check marks, and I don't know if there's any reason for me to summarize the, the comments that have been made that, and I'd be happy to read this, but you have this in front of you, should we, should we go through this, or should we just get to the point?
Let's ask the Town Manager.
In my experience, the, the Chair has provided a summary of the report for the, for the public. And I've seen it done as simple as just reading what it says, but I, I would leave it up to you, but I think it's important for you to publicly summarize the, the results of the evaluation.
All right, well, the narrative summary is that the, the, the comments were Carrie Excels a, in communicating with the Select Board and maintaining professional relationships with individual Select Board members, her honesty and integrity are never in question. Her management style is calm and centered, which enables others to remain grounded while responding to frequent crises. She is a good listener and instills confidence in staff. Another member of the Board comments, Carrie is a capable executive who knows how to work within the limits of a governmental and political structure. She is dedicated, honest, open, and responsive. She puts challenges of the moment in perspective and deals with crisis with maturity and judgment. She is easy to work with, listens to people who are willing to speak honestly with her because she is fair and trustworthy. Another comment is Carrie consistently exceeds expectations on her working relationship with the Board based on mutual respect and trust. She identifies innovative solutions and builds consensus while allowing for diverse opinions. She promotes a positive culture, civil discourse, and professional decorum, and demonstrates thoughtful, creative management of available resources to increase productivity and economy. Carrie's experience really shines in financial planning and budgeting. More importantly, her guiding principles are well-aligned with the town's values. Carrie has provided steady and motivating leadership for the town, offering much-needed support and encouragement for employees while continuing to address citizen concerns and expectations for quality service. Simultaneously, she has effectively advanced town goals, working both with her senior management team and the Select Board. During this time, significant employee vacancies, including some key senior management positions, have been met with creative recruitment and placement strategies while simultaneously encouraging collaboration and mutual assistance across positions. An overall improved and more productive employer-employee relationship is evident under Carrie's leadership, albeit she admits that building these relationships and a stronger infrastructure is still very much a work in progress. And as evidenced by the successful twenty-twenty-three Annual Town Meeting and Fiscal Year Twenty-two and Twenty-three Fiscal Management, Carrie has demonstrated her leadership and ability to both move the town goals forward while thoughtfully responding to other legal and ongoing unplanned operational challenges. The town is fortunate to have Carrie LeFleur as our Town Manager, who is both mindful of the need for fiscal planning and the importance of supporting town employees while delivering the quality of town services expected by its citizens. We thank her for all she has done for the town this challenging year and look forward to working with her in the coming years. Carrie is a straight shooter who is easy to work with.
Yes.
So that's the narrative of your bosses and their comment on your performance. And so I'm really very pleased that the unanimity of the support that this board shows for the work you've done. And all I could say is that with regard to your contractual obligations, you are well entitled to the bonus that results from outstanding performance. And so I would like the, is there any further comment on this by anyone?
I, I would just like to thank the Board for taking the time to do the evaluation. I know from doing evaluations myself, it's never easy. And so I, I do appreciate that. I am chuckling a little bit when you were reading about calm and centered and thinking about my, my slight outburst on the regional dispatch, so. But, you know, certain things get me going, and that's one of, one of them that, that gets me going, but it, it has been a challenging year or year and a half, and it's, it's teed up to be a challenging couple of years. I will say I do appreciate this, your support and the support of the senior management team, the organization as a whole, but particularly the senior management team. And I can tell you, my work life has gotten much easier since March when Megan joined us, and I greatly appreciate the contributions that she has made as a senior leader of the community. Thank you.
So, well, thank you very much. It's been a challenging year for all of us, I think. It's been a lot of work, but it, it hasn't been really hard work. That's the way I see it.
Yes, it has. It's been very, very hard.
Been a lot, there's been a lot of it. I don't know.
I, I, I just want to add that in spite of everything, you're, it's really a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Makes a big difference, even when the work is hard.
Thank you.
And you can stay.
Terrific.
Please.
She's thrilled.
Okay, do we have a motion?
We do. That the Board, having completed its annual review of the Town Manager's performance and having provided her with a written summary of the findings of the Board regarding the review evaluation criteria, all in accordance with Section Eleven of her employment agreement, has determined that she has performed her duties in a manner deemed to be outstanding, and that pursuant to Section Six C of the agreement, she is entitled to receive a merit bonus of five percent of her base salary. Said merit bonus shall not be added to the following year's base salary. That in addition to all other compensation or bonus received by the Town Manager, she shall receive a cost of living adjustment to her annual base salary in the second year of her employment effective as of July one, twenty-twenty-three, in an amount equal to the such adjustment provided to the other non-union employees in accordance with Section Six B of her employment agreement.
Second.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you, thank you, Terry.
Okay, are we, is this, is this the end of the agenda?
Uh, yeah, move to, move to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Escobedo.
Yes, aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye, thank you.
Aye.